The group is, you know, is growing.
Do you build relationships?
And you have a hard time finding any.
Connections, yeah, absolutely.
That sweets that in each group, other than bench. Which we're trying to say, we don't need people to sit down.
You know, but.
You want something, you know, I'm saying, you know, I look for.
There are the people in the.
A lot of times, a lot of times, yeah, if you got some good.
Yeah, I mean, I was looking back at the plan, I could see, you know, there is language up generally all these days. Talk to these.
On the enforcement side of.
And that's kind of, that is kind of the nature of the beast.
That's very much.
But it's, you know, if, you know, but I think, you know, in one, you know, the part, you know, I think the, the main people's burden, you know, the boat against the period, not me, people, but the park station trails commission made a recommendation that they get their another 20 grand.
Which are.
In the, in the part dedication fee.
Oh, is that tonight?
And that is unfortunately one part of it is if they get some fees, they can do more, they can put more facilities.
I don't know.
I think it's tonight. I think, um, there's a recognition that.
Yeah, no, I think it's tonight.
You know, we've become a senior friend of the place.
The day before he came.
Come around as soon as these are active and.
They're, they're.
Is there a dispatch truck?
They're looking for, they're looking for some structure to be there, you know, unblockable by people.
This message is a slay over there.
From the city, you know.
Have you ever.
And not to discount the fact that they did spend 50,000 or whatever to do the pickleball course, which is.
Yeah, because.
I'm, you had a huge members.
Right, no, I know, I guess, it's just interesting, last two days we had.
But I love.
We had 32 people.
Yeah, he, he is a 20 year.
He really in conversation and it's a great company.
Well, he never really.
I even know. You know, and I have.
But his presentation.
More of a negative attitude.
You know, but he's just not that, he's just not that person.
In that, they're, they work for kids.
We care as well, he's just not ready to.
I don't know if he does. We've got all these pickleball groups, which is.
Financial.
And everything we have for, they have, this is a lot where they can't move the trash container closer to the front door, they can't do this, they can't do that, they can't move a saddle closer to the thing, they can't, they can't, you know, they.
How much money is this?
They blow the grass in on the.
I don't think he's wearing.
I mean, that's dumb stuff.
It's dumb stuff.
Yeah, but, but they, they, they find excuses.
He's hurt.
No, and he isn't doing it, I don't think he's doing it for them.
The whole thing. Mr. Negative. To him, it's not much though. It would be like, it'd be like you were going to donate your celery.
I mean, I recognize, I mean, donate 400, maybe, some coordination thing.
Oh, you can pay for it, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So, didn't I tell you? Mine is cash.
Actually, when I asked, maybe it's, is that civic art?
But see, we never get, we can't.
Was there some?
There was another one in there.
Anyways, I signed it because I wanted to donate.
There was probably.
I wanted to donate mine.
No, we, we don't have an open forum typically.
No.
No, but I believe.
Find it, absolutely.
Both items on the, tonight have a, a open forum.
No, I mean.
Have a public, yeah, public hearing, yeah, so, but, and I'll explain the way it works. Basically, after all the presentations for that application, then we'll, we'll ask questions, we'll get the, we'll clarify some stuff, make sure the commissioner they're all comfortable with it.
Yeah.
And then we'll host a public hearing, we'll ask anyone who wants to speak to the issue to come out, spend a few minutes, tell us what you think, good, bad, or indifferent. I assume you're for the riveting comprehensive plan discussion.
Been waiting for it for years.
You have been, I tend to be again.
Then it's $22 a quarter after.
You just look like that kind of guy.
Then you bill in July. That's what. We have a very, very big meeting, I think, just like we speak.
I think they did the public hearing at City Council.
No, we hosted some.
One and then laid in one.
Yeah, we both. I'm not quite sure why we're doing one.
Well, discussion.
It's a draft plan. Well, we're going to public hearing though.
Not that I put. Sand loss as we.
Oh, I'm sure it does. Or at least.
If I'm gonna, those guys haven't figured that part out.
Or at least somehow, Matt Kinsel, kind of, in the.
We need to do this.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, it is a little dry.
Uh, no.
With that empty. The tech is a good job.
Potato. Hi. I stand corrected. I can do every day. Now, let's wrap this up for.
Do you have weeds like going crazy on your shoreline?
I'm sorry?
Do you have weeds on your shoreline like crazy?
They're starting.
Oh, my God, they're so bad this year.
We are right where all of the, I don't know if you got the Lake Association, where all are green, and we have it out five off.
We have so many weeds this year, I mean, that are just floating, not, not growing, just floating.
Okay, yeah. Everyone is ready. Good evening, it's seven o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order. Would you call the role, please, Bailey?
Commissioner Black.
Here.
Commissioner Batty.
Here.
Commissioner Lee.
Here.
Commissioner Miller.
Here.
Commissioner Keen.
Here.
Commissioner Legness.
President.
And Commissioner Gerard.
Here.
We're asked if you are able to please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chair is looking for a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Chair is looking for a motion to approve the planning commission meeting minutes from the June 13, 2018 meeting. As presented.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. So tonight, we have two items that both have a public hearing, so I'll explain how this works before we get started here. The applicant, um, the application will be presented by the city, uh, as they are familiar with it, it will then be, come to the planning, after that, the planning commission will ask any clarification questions they need to make sure that we understand it. Other than that, we'll ask if the applicant would like to say a few words, the commission may also have some questions for the applicant. After that, we will host a public hearing, where we're going to welcome all of you that are interested in commenting on the application, to feel free to do so. I'll give a little more explanation how that works when we get to that part of the meeting. So the first item on the agenda is a conditional use permit amendment for Lakes International Academy, Language Academy, 19850 Fenway Avenue. Again, it's to hold a public hearing and to consider the conditional use permit amendment application. Donovan, I assume you're presenting, please do so.
Bailey, can I get some?
Uh, excuse me, Dan, we have, um, the applicant is represented by one of the commission members, Dennis Barry, so at this time, he will step down from the commission and he will be abstaining from any votes this evening. Forgot that, Dennis, my apologies. Donovan, now, please present.
Yes, sir. Chair members of the planning commission like to present the conditional use of permit amendment for the Lila school located on Fenway Avenue. On your screen is shown an existing site plan, though obviously the, the roundabout is there now. But this gives you an idea of how the, there's a current service driveway here, a rear driveway for the buses, and how cars come in and do a counterclockwise, um, for drop off, you know, through that parking lot. And, and what is proposed, and this is the third amendment, um, the, the first amendment came before you in, in February, which added this eight classroom, two-story addition. And this, this amendment is to add a 49,000 square foot building expansion and increase the student enrollment capacity to 755 students and staff up to 80 members, and that would bring the total to 38 classrooms. Currently, with amendments, it's 28 classrooms. This expansion on the north side of the, of the, uh, building consists of 10 classrooms, a performing arts center, gymnasium with locker rooms, and a common area. And associated with this expansion is a, is a re, re, um, thinking of where, how buses come in, in this case, they come in from the, you know, again, from Farnham, but drop off along here and then exit onto a proposed new, uh, right out only exit onto Farnham, north of the, uh, the roundabout. Also, what's proposed is that the service entrance now becomes the parkway entrance to a parking lot on this east side of the building, which also has an entrance to this, the large, uh, the performing arts center and gymnasium. And the, um, it's a 106 car parking lot to the, to the east, and this is also proposing that there'd be 200 students, um, in grades nine to 12 for the 2019-2020 school year. Just as a reminder, this is, um, for the, the long, the second, what they call second phase construction plan with like temporary classrooms going approximately here before these, uh, this, you know, is proposed to be constructed. The, uh, the parking plan does comply with a code required number of parking spaces. The, uh, the fire access, um, um, has been reviewed by the fire chief and does recommend a fire hydrant on either the northwest or the northeast corner in these turfed areas to allow for, um, hydrants on that northern side and better fire response. Though, of course, the, the building will be fully sprinkled. Also, there's a trash enclosure proposed for this, on this southeast corner. Um, there are three lights proposed for the, for the parking lot, and they appear to meet the requirements for no lights bill over from the, over the property lines. I will jump down to the, the landscaping plan, which shows a, um, line of trees on the, the north side of the building and, and west, and, and large number of foundation plantings. And so that's a total of 32 trees, 171 shrubs. Staff recommends more, um, trees along this side, um, to continue that perimeter planting. And at this point, the, uh, the application does include a school mascot logo on the north, um, on the north elevation of approximately 300 square feet, um, and this is, was, is written into, into one of the CUP proposed conditions, and then, of course, that the signage be non-iluminated. The, um, this, the city, city engineer review letter does note many, many, um, has many comments. Chiefly, they, they, they deal with the traffic circulation and just overall comment that the, um, uh, you know, in some ways, this is something of a, of a preliminary, um, site plan due to, there's still negoti, there's still discussion around how much impervious surface there is, which is really tied into, uh, how much stormwater capacity will be needed and all those calculations. And I am pulling up the, um, a traffic flow, um, plan that was, um, submitted by the applicant to show the planning commission, um, I don't see it.
About six or seven up from the bottom there, Lila traffic.
Um, yes, thank you. And this one, um, so on your screen, we can see how what's proposed is that, you know, auto traffic comes in from that, you know, from, from Headwaters Parkway, and then is both can go to the, to the existing door, to the south, as well as loop around to drop off in front of the, um, in front of the, the gymnasium, performing arts, um, space, and then loop back around to exit on, onto Fenway. And, um, and the way, and this also includes that, the bus drop off, which is something of a clockwise motion on the site. One of the big concerns of the city engineer is, is that if, um, if this connection is allowed, then people will, parents will normally want to go the shortest route and go through here, which could result in stacking and, you know, and, and cars queuing in Headwaters Parkway, which he finds unacceptable. Um, you know, that's, this obviously will be, you know, have to be the result of more discussions with the, between the city engineer and the Lila staff and their traffic, uh, their, their site engineers. And, you know, the school administration has shown great skill in getting, in, with the 11th Avenue, Southwest Campus, with their traffic flow, so I hope that can be resolved. Um, and that's something that, um, you know, the city engineer is really, is concerned about at the moment. Also, the, there's a concern that the actual parking aisles and the parking spaces on the, the east parking lot, uh, don't meet, don't meet city standards, um, so that will have to be addressed. That's also part of where the stormwater design will, will have to accommodate that additional impervious surface. The, um, also, the city engineer is requiring pedestrian facilities that, that link the site to Farnham and Fenway, um, along these, you know, along the, presumably the, the bus travel route and also that new, the new access onto Fenway. And at this point, um, I'd like to offer that it's a staff recommendation of approval with conditions, um, and they relate to that the, uh, school population be, you know, have a maximum of 755 students, 80 staff members, and 38 classrooms, and that the addition be constructed, um, to, on the north end of the existing building, and that the school mascot sign not exceed 320 square feet and not be illuminated. Concerns of the city engineer shall be met. Also, in the language we have that relates to the financials, the required permitting with the watershed district, and also that, you know, any future site or building facility changes, as determined by the city, you know, will require an amendment to the CUP and the, um, except as amended herein, conditions of the other, the, um, of the, the original CUP and the other two amendments shall remain in, in, uh, full force and effect. At this point, I'd be happy to take any questions from the planning commission.
Thank you. Before I open it up to all of the planning commission members, don't lose this slide. Can we get a little more clarification for all of us before we start into the nitpicking little stuff? So with your, first, I'm looking out and I can see the people who are here tonight, I'm betting the bulk of them are here for this and not for the riveting discussion on the comprehensive plan.
Mm-hmm.
Pretty good analysis, I think. That being said, the concern has always been traffic and location of the building. So let's start with the building, because that's the simplest. Do we know, on the west side where those classrooms are, are they all one-story, and how far is the closest one from the lot line? And that may have to be something, I wait for Dennis to answer, or the applicant, and I'm okay with that. Are the classrooms a one-story building, I believe, and, and that location?
That's true.
Why don't we call?
Yeah, it's about 31 feet tall, I believe. Do you have an elevation photo? Dennis, do you have your usual plans have that?
They were changed, like, six months ago, getting that picture put on. They want to head to the back, now they do. West elevation. So there's two floors, I missed that, my apologies.
So this shows the, um, the distance of, the closest distance of 116 feet to this, the northwest corner, from, to the lot line, of course, further to the actual house. And then, for the, the first amendment addition, that's about 117 to that nearest house, as well as 60 to the lot line here, no, I'm sorry, nearest property on that, that northwest.
Yes, but the, of concern tonight is the new one that you showed us first. Correct? We've already approved these other two?
Yeah.
Okay. So can we go back to the traffic flow, ma'am?
Sure.
I'm interested in everyone being heard, but I think we should all hear the same thing. Where the buses are going in, on Farnham there, that right turn in, is that a one-way in only for the buses, or will traffic be coming out of there later?
I believe they've, they've, they've separated the bus traffic from, from the vehicle traffic, so that would be simply buses, the bus drop off.
So it's a one-way road. Will we be able to exit at that point? Can cars come out there? Is that your question?
No, it's a 24-foot white drive.
So it, there's a capacity for vehicles to come back out there, yes?
What's up, the intention would be during drop off and pickup, that all the buses use it. There's, there'd be no reason for anybody else to be coming out that way that I know.
So you have no problem making that a one-way? But you don't have to answer that right now, because you have plenty of time. I just want to clarify a few things that I, I want all of, everyone in the audience to hear. Where the city, the city engineer, where, how adamant is he about blocking off that lower, the first exit off of Farnham to go into the lower lot there?
I think if he can be assured that the traffic won't back into Headwaters, I think he is pretty adamant about that.
Okay, so then the only traffic we would see leaving that, specifically going north on Farnham, would be just a small lot, which is what we currently have. Can you point your arrow at what he's talking, the area that he's talking about? Yes.
Well, this, you know, this.
But, but you're, the part that. Down the right side, show them where the split is here.
Right there.
Yeah. That connection's not there today.
Yeah, so the city engineer's concern is that traffic could queue out into here, or also, if traffic follows the, you know, the, the current flow, which is the kind of counterclockwise flow in the existing parking lot, then we have kind of merging here, um, which is, you know, if, if, I could see if people here, thinking they're waiting for a while, and then these people could be, you know, could appear that they're trying to cut in, um, is a certain, is a, I think that is a dynamic that could be there.
And so that is an in-only?
So this, yeah, this is, this is shown as an in-only, correct?
And then, uh, straight ahead, where you go into the new parking lot, that's a one-way going in only?
Correct. Yeah, there's, there's a median here, so this is, this is definitely a right in, you know, this is a, you know, this is part of the parkway, so it's divided. So there's a right in, um, and the way the flow shows, it comes around here, so then the drop off can be at the curb, and then, you know, comes back here, then to, um, exit out, you know, onto, onto Farnham this way.
There won't be any southbound traffic from the new lot to the old lot? Is your understanding?
Correct. And I believe that, um, Lila will have some more information on that, on, on what they've, and so that didn't show up in the plans, and I think, you know, a striping plan and signage is important to this, and of course, the city engineer has requirements for, you know, stop sign up here, and also, give some more clarity on just directional, so that, um, in the absence of Lila staff, that people are clear where they need to go.
And what is the current discussion? Last, my last question, gentlemen, and it's all yours. What is the status of the off-campus parking? There was discussion in our packet about no parking, limited parking hours, et cetera. Do we have any further consensus on that?
I haven't, I have no update from what's contained in, in the review letter, you know, that there'd be, uh, you know, it'd be signed on Farnham, no parking with, during certain school hours. Um, so that's, no update on that.
Hey, commissioners, any other questions? You must have some. Eric?
Donovan, can you, so on the north side of the new parking lot on the east side of the building, at the very top, it, it shows the traffic flow like we're in Britain, as well as on the east side of the existing parking lot on the south, is that the intent is to have vehicles reversed?
You mean reverse in what way, I'm sorry?
Right where your arrow is, the traffic flow is going.
Down.
On the left-hand side.
I believe that's the intent, in order to get to the curb.
So, but on the very north, so you have, you have the, the traffic on the top going east, and the traffic on the bottom going west.
Correct.
Versus crossing over and staying on the right-hand side, is that the intent?
I believe so, I mean, so that these people, this would be the drop off traffic coming around here, and then the only way they can really, um, the most orderly way they can leave is actually this sort of, you know, crossing this flow in order to get back north again and then leave.
So is that, is that going to be marked there?
I, I believe that's a question, that's something for Lila to address.
I'll wait.
Eric, are you, are you asking, will the traffic be on opposite sides of the road there?
Correct.
Well, I don't think so, no, I don't think so. I think that's just a, just, they're just showing the arrows.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay.
That's not the way it's.
I'm gonna read about the wheel there.
Yeah, I don't think it's.
Similarly, on the east end of the lower parking lot?
The schematic drawings of patterns, I think.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions here? Other questions?
Can you, can you go back, Donovan, one more time with the one that Paul asked about on the, I'm going to say, the southeast corner of the, of the existing building, and the traffic, if you'd stay with the traffic plan?
Back, back, back to traffic?
Are you, yeah, go back to traffic.
Okay.
Are you saying that, that these, and I can't go with your arrow, right over in the southeast corner?
Mm-hmm.
Not, not that far, you're.
Yeah.
Stay with the, ma'am. And now go, now go up to that.
That turn. No, go straight north.
Where they're turning into the existing parking lot.
Yeah.
Are, are.
Now, go, go to the east side of that parking lot.
Okay.
Northeast corner, right there.
Okay, right there. Can you tell me the revision that the city engineer is suggesting for that area there as opposed to what we see?
That that be closed off, so that you have the.
So no entrance from that, Headwaters Parkway at that point going into the existing parking lot?
Correct, so you have.
And all go up to the new parking lot?
You have the separation, so you have a full queuing here for drop off, and then they come back out the same, the same driveway. And also, there's, you know, this, this could be the queuing, and this, and this could, you know, still have this counterclockwise flow that way.
Okay, I'm clear.
Mike? So Donovan, you'd have, uh, two different entrances into those two different lots, so that would kind of break up the traffic, correct? The, the south lot would be one entrance in, one entrance out, they're the same entrance in and out. And then, um, on the new, the new lot on the right, or on the east, would be one-way in, exit out the top, and out to Fenway.
That's what's proposed, yes.
Okay.
Well, that's what.
And the red would be a one-way in for the buses only.
Correct, I mean, I'm sorry, that's, that's what the city engineer would prefer.
And all tra, all traffic one-way in that way. Or is it just buses? So when a bus is coming in, cars can come out on the red?
I mean, I guess conceivably they would be, but I think that, you know, the Lila's administration preference is that this, you know, this use of this, this Fenway exit be maximized.
But not up there, just on the, on the west side of the school where they're coming in?
Yeah.
Would that be an, an entrance only, a one-way in, heading kind of northeast, not a little bit south of the.
Now, a little bit south of there where you're coming, yeah. That whole area, that. Would that be a one-way in, a one-way road?
That's under discussion now, whether to, you know, sign that, you know, stripe that as a, as a one-way.
Because I think that would eliminate a lot of problems, with buses coming in, cars coming out, you know, that kind of thing, and-
And then what's the status of the approval of the exit onto Fenway?
It's a, it's a local road, and so it would be, you know, if this was approved as a site plan, that would constitute the approval. And of course, meeting the city engineer's recommendations as far as construction standards.
Mike, Fenway is a city street, right? It's not a county road?
It is a city street, yes.
And is that, does that median go past where the proposed access point's going to be? Is there a median that goes past that?
Yes. So it is a right, is a right-out only.
How far up does that median go beyond the, beyond the proposed access point?
I am not sure of that.
Do we have an arrow or something that shows that?
Okay. I'll show you in a different drawing. So we're going, yeah, all the way, almost to the, you know, north of the, almost to the north property line.
And that hard line there isn't, can you move that down a little bit again? No, the other way up then, I'm sorry, yes. Nope, well, that, okay, that existing regional stormwater retention pond, is that owned by the, by the school, or is that city-owned?
That is city-owned, it's a regional pond, and so for their, for their private site, they need to do their own stormwater management.
But will it all drain into that pond?
I don't believe so. I think that, you know, my conversation with Ryan is that, you know, that that has a certain capacity to serve, you know, it's designed to serve a lot of, you know, other parts of Headwaters, and that the flow, there is a utility plan we can, we can look to, to answer that one. But it's my understanding that right now, what is proposed for stormwater pond is here, not shown with much detail. And so, and as well as, yeah, it looks like all of it is flowing to that, to the west, you know, these, the blue pipes.
So it's all going to a new pond?
I believe so.
Really? Can you, can you show us where that pond is, that it's flowing to? I mean, that other pond's just-
Yeah, I think the grading plan will show you a little better, I think.
And is that pond, city pond, or a school pond?
This is a private pond, so it'd be, you know, private construction, private maintenance.
They have their own maintenance on it, then?
Correct.
Other questions? Would the applicant like to make any comments at this time?
Cam Hedland, Executive Director at Lakes International. We want to be very sympathetic to the community in terms of traffic flow, and that's why we're really asking for the connection. I think the concern about it maybe queuing back out onto, onto the parkway is just easily avoidable by a couple of different changes if we need to make them. At the corner, where the connection that we're asking for between the new, the old service road and the old parking lot there, up at this northeast corner of the original parking lot, we can easily queue the entire line down around the existing parking lot and back up. That would give us plenty of length of line to not have any queuing going out to, onto the parkway if we need to do that. We show that they could go straight to the school, or they could go down. We can easily define where they go through that intersection. It probably makes more sense to turn everybody coming through there to the left, down through the parking lot, and back up, so that we have better separation. And same way, the other parking lot, you know, we've done a long queue line, but if there's not the traffic that needs that kind of a queue line, we can shorten that and do some other things. We don't want any traffic. I, we've, I think done an amazing job on 11th Avenue to very rarely have anybody sitting on 11th anymore. Occasionally, there's still one or two cars that wait five seconds before they can turn in, or a little more than that. And so we are very aware of that. We will have people out as much as we need to direct the flow. We want to mark the lot one ways. The idea of the buses, definitely during bus traffic one-way. My only hesitation to marking that a one-way is during the day, there might be delivery trucks or things that come in one-way, and it's just easier for them to get out, but I'm happy if you want to for sure send them back to Fenway. I think we can do that and make it a one-way all the time, but definitely during bus traffic. We would not allow cars to be coming against the bus traffic. It just, that's those are the kinds of things that we really avoid. And on 11th Avenue, if you watch, when the buses are there, we have bus traffic behind them, but we stop and are very careful who's coming in and going out, and always having somebody there when the buses are there. I mean, it's just part of our safety for our own kids. So those pieces, we will work with the city, we'll work with the engineer, we will, when we get there, try what we think is going to work and modify it immediately if it isn't working.
Is any of your other, I know you have the architect here, and knowing one of the traffic engineers, but I believe they're here also, so I don't know if they all want to speak, or what the plan is?
Mr. Chairman, Dennis Batty, 22770 Imperial Avenue, North Forest Lake, architect on this project. We'd like to present, make a presentation here that I think will answer some of these questions in maybe a couple of different parts. We want to deal with the, the traffic, and I think we'll, we'll do that first, because I think that's probably the, the biggest concern here. But let me just make a general statement, then I'm going to bring our civil engineering firm, KLJ, and Lorena and Joe, Lorena's the engineer and Joe's the traffic consultant. And they each have some comments to make, and we have a couple of other visuals here. But we, we have, we spent a great deal of time working on this traffic plan. We've met with the, with Ryan Goodman, the city engineer, and had lengthy discussions with him about this. And so he saw this, you know, all ahead of time, and has, has, and of course, has responded to the specific drawings that we submitted with his comments. But one of our overarching concerns has been to, to re, we don't make any bones about the fact that we're asking that the site, the traffic patterns be reconfigured, but the overarching concern here is to try to recon, we feel like it's possible to reconfigure the traffic patterns on this site to substantially reduce the amount of traffic that would come, particularly on Farnham Road. The way it's set up, the way the site is set up right now, I'm going to- This is a copy of that, this is, this is a copy of that same drawing that Donovan had, but I want to be able to point to things here, so I'm going to-
Just hold on a second, then Dennis, and we'll get you up here. It usually takes a minute or so to-
Okay. Well, let me just make a few other comments. But, so that, that is, that's behind a lot of what we're doing. I mean, we could get by without some of these things, I believe, still make it illegal, you know, have access, that sort of thing. But we just feel like that the possibility exists by making this connection that we've already talked about here, between the east drive there and the southwest parking lot, which currently is only accessed off Farnham Road, and that, and then allowing, allowing access, car traffic access. The bus, let me back up. Bus traffic, we're talking about six buses, morning and evening. That's, that is the extent that a school this size, there never will be more than six buses involved. Currently, I think there's four, is it four now? Yeah, right now, there's four, so we're, we're projecting growth, you know, to eventually six buses. This, the, where we're showing the, the bus access onto the site, that's where the buses currently access the site. And that is a 24-foot wide drive. It's, it's actually set up so that it could be two-way traffic. But it is signed so that it's only, parents understand that it's only to be used by buses during, you know, drop-off and pickup times. And we'll, you know, I, we're open to, you know, to the decision of whether or not these should be made permanently one-way streets, or if they should, you know, if making them one-way certain times of the day. One of the things that, I've worked with a number of churches and a number of public buildings that have involved large parking lots down through the years, and I have never worked with anybody who has the, the handle, on handling parking like, like Lila does. We've, I've been up here before, and we've, you've seen what we've done on the 11th Street campus, which is far tighter, far less potential for stacking space, and much more limited access than what this site has. And we're, we're asking that this, are we up here yet?
Yes.
Oh, okay. What we want to do is transfer- What we want to do is, we want to transfer the vehicular traffic that now comes down Headwaters Parkway, and comes clear up around here onto Farnham Road, and comes in here, and comes around and drops off, and then comes back out here onto Farnham and leaves. We want, I mean, we'll still leave that as an option, but if we open this up here, this allows parents to come in here, come up here and drop off right here. What, what the school administration would do is there would be, this is the way, the same way they do it on their 11th Street campus, there's people out there every morning, essentially directing traffic, but there would be someone stationed here, so that the minute the queuing here exceeded the number of cars extended out onto, or even got close to extending out onto Headwaters Parkway, they would divert the traffic so that it came down here, and you'd have another potentially 20 or 30-car stacking loop that's already there, able to be used. And then further, we're proposing that there'd be an additional drop-off on the site. The other major entrance into the building is, this proposed addition is right here. And so there's a drive right here. And, but this additional, or parking would come in here, be directed by, I'm assuming, both markings on the pavement and signage, so that they would come in, come up this way, loop around, come around and be able to drop off kids on the right side of the, the vehicle, and then loop back around and go out this proposed link to Fenway Avenue. So that all of the parking, that, all of the, the parents, school, staff, that would use this parking here, would never even come close to Farnham Drive. It would, that, we're essentially creating a loop where this, all of this parking right here would enter the site here, exit the site up there. And this parking, so that we're, instead of adding to the parking, or adding to the traffic load at this current existing Farnham Road point of entrance, we're, we, your traffic engineer will show you that we're actually reducing the amount of traffic that will use this Farnham, Farnham Road, and there will thus be less traffic in, in the neighborhood. The, by far and away, the largest concern that we've had expressed to us in the, the neighborhood meetings that we have had, has been traffic-related. And so we feel like doing these two things, creating an access, and we've, we've asked only for a right-out. At the maximum, it could be right, only right-in, right-out, because there is the, the median in the road there anyway. But our thinking on just asking for a, a right-out there is that it would discourage any shortcutting through the neighborhood of people trying to, you know, find a, a second way in. This would basically force everybody to use basically the same traffic pattern for entering and exiting the site. They'd have two options. You know, I don't know that it makes any difference, but, you know, parents will figure out, what I've learned is people, they find the path of least resistance when it comes to participating in, in these kind of traffic patterns, and they'll, they'll, they'll do what works best for them. If their kid has classes in this part of the building, they'll probably drop off here. Same thing if they have, kids have, you know, primarily classes up there, they'll drop off up there. So I want to, I want to give our civil engineer, Lorena, a chance to address issues related to the, the stormwater management. There are, that again, has been discussed in detail with Ryan Goodman, and I'll let her talk about that. Then I'd also, we've got another graphic here that we want to show you on the traffic pattern, and Joe from KLJ is their traffic consultant person, and so he's, he'll, he'll address that after Lorena speaks. And then I want to come back and talk a little bit about the, the, the building aesthetics.
Good afternoon, or good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for having us. Just, I want to speak just briefly in response to the questions-
Before you start, please, would you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, sorry. Lorena DeWalt, 2536 Millwood Avenue, Roseville. So specifically, unless there's other questions, I would speak to the stormwater management that, questions that were asked. So we've been in conversations with Ryan Goodman, City Engineer, as well as Rice Creek Watershed, as the jurisdiction for watershed approvals. And what has been discussed, I can bring up the grading plan here to, to speak to the proposed conditions. If we can get that back on, on the camera there?
Yes.
Okay. So according to Rice Creek Watershed, we are required to treat both for stormwater volume and stormwater quality. In discussions with Ryan Goodman, the city engineer, the regional ponds that exist, there's the one that was identified to the north of the site, northeast, and then there's also a regional pond that's to the northwest of the site. The pond that's to the northeast actually captures water coming from the developments to the east. The entire site as it exists today drains off-site to the regional pond to the west. So what this pond here is, is going to do, is it's going to treat the new impervious. So the requirement from the watershed is to treat the new impervious surfaces. So what that water will do is it'll drain to the catch basins into the pond. There'll be, it's called a bio-retention basin. So there will be an overflow out of the pond that goes into the storm sewer in Farnham, and then to the regional pond in the northwest. We confirmed with the city engineer that the capacity of that northwest regional pond is sufficient to treat all of the water from the full development of the site, as, as far as water volume goes. So the water quality still needs to be treated on-site, as well as we have enough volume in the pond proposed, so that during intense rainfalls, that volume will- in the pond proposed, so that during intense rainfalls, that volume will rise and the rate will be reduced to existing conditions. So, we're not allowed to, to express water off-site, we're not allowed to discharge water off-site that increases the rates. So, the rates that are discharging today will remain in future conditions. So, we're not contributing to downstream flooding issues. So, what we're proposing meets Rice Creek Watershed District's requirements. We've discussed it with Ryan Goodman, the city engineer, and they agree with Rice Creek and have helped us come to this conclusion.
So, there were questions on this, so if anyone has further questions? Mike?
Mr. DeWalt?
DeWalt, yeah.
Did you say that the, the proposed new pond will overflow into the pond to the north?
To the northwest.
And how will it do that?
We're connecting to the existing storm sewer in Farnham, which is where the site discharges today. So, we're connecting to existing storm sewer, and that's where the existing site discharges today.
Can you generally point that out on the map?
Sorry. So, there's catch basins along here.
Okay.
In, in Farnham. So, we're connecting here in the street to this catch basin, and then that's where this pond is discharging to. There's a discharge point here. So, all of the new impervious surfaces, including the building, will be captured, will be picked up and captured in, in storm sewer that comes around, discharges into the pond. Depending on the rainfall intensity, that pond may or may not have water in it. And when it gets up to a certain level, it'll overflow into the discharge point and out the storm sewer.
Is there a normal water level for that proposed pond?
I don't have that information. Let's see. The discharge point is 908. There's not, it's not a wet pond, it's not designed to be a wet pond to have water in it all the time.
Okay. Other questions?
So, so none of the, none of the new drainage from the pervious, impervious parking lot and stuff goes to the existing regional pond on the northeast?
Correct.
None of it?
Correct.
Well, well, eventually.
Uh, no.
No, no.
Didn't you say it overflows?
To the northwest.
So, the northwest, the northwest one is an existing one that was done with the Headwaters Developments?
Correct.
So, it's a, it's a newly-built pond?
I don't know when it was built, but it was, it was sized to, for the capacity of the entire development. We were unsure going in preliminary design whether or not it was sized to treat full development of the Lila site. We've gone through the analysis with the city engineer, and they have confirmed that there is excess capacity to treat the entire site. So, what we need to treat onsite is for rate control.
Mike?
So, it's normally not a wet pond, it's just basically a sediment pond. Everything that flows in there.
Correct.
Over the years, it's going to build up, build up. What's the schedule for cleaning that pond out, the sediment in there?
So, we haven't determined that as of yet, but there will be a maintenance plan. And it's a privately-owned pond, so that will be Lila's responsibility to ensure that that's done.
Okay.
Other questions?
Yep. What's the plan for the irrigation, the sprinkler system, as far as where, where is it going to get its water from?
So, currently, the irrigation system is tied into the water, the water system at the, at the building, and the plan is to continue that. So, our landscape architect is, is aware of the intent to reduce water use, so we will be implementing low-water measures, but we're currently planning to irrigate the landscaping.
Thank you.
So, I'll ask our traffic engineer, Joe, to come up. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Joe DeVore, 1138 Hudson Trail in Lino Lakes. I am the traffic engineer with K L J, and completed the traffic study for the Lila Phase Two development. Couple of things I wanted to talk about on the site plan that Dennis had as far as circulation. Looking at the total traffic for this.
Joe, can we get the picture back again?
Yep.
All right. Proceed, please.
Looking at the total traffic coming in and out of the site, it's roughly about two times the existing traffic. And so, when we look at the addition, or the existing parking lot, all of the traffic is coming in and out of the Farnham access point. And so, what we're doing with the proposed conditions, as Dennis was stating earlier, is we're really trying to shift as much of this traffic to the new access point and actually reduce the amount of traffic that is using this Farnham access for the proposed site. And so, keeping this internal connection here is an important part of that, where we can bring in about 85% of the traffic coming into the site in the AM through this access point, and then dividing that traffic out between the two drop-off points. And so, for the AM, you just bring in traffic right up to the drop-off point, exit, and then back out to the roundabout to either go north or east. And then, in the east parking lot, you would come into the access, do a loop, drop off again on the right side of the vehicle, to the other doors into the school, do a loop out, and then right onto Farm, or Fenway Avenue, and then back into the roundabout, either going north or east. And so, it, it really separates out the traffic. In the actual models that we ran, there were no queuing issues at this right-in, and that was assuming 85% of the traffic that was coming into the school in the morning was using this access. And that was assuming that there was kind of an equal distribution. As queuing got heavy on one or the other drop-off area, that Lila staff could switch over traffic to either using one or the other. So, really, you only have one lane of traffic coming in, but it's going to two locations, so that's really not queuing back from that area. Another question that you guys had earlier, was this crossover point up here? Again, this is just more of the drawing. Really, the, the only traffic coming from the west are those six buses in the AM peak. This would be striped as a normal road, or wouldn't be striped. So, mostly, you would come up and around, and there would be no conflicting traffic except for those six buses. In the event of those six buses coming through, it would be normal traffic, where you'd be on the right side of the road. For this queuing down here, there's a big difference between the AM peak and the PM peak. So, for the AM peak, we don't see an issue with the drop-off coming in, because we can separate out those two traffic streams. But for PM pickup, parents get there five minutes early, eight minutes, 10 minutes early. So, we really wanted a space where we identified a location where parents could come, park, and wait until students, students got let out from school. And so, we looked at either bringing them into the access and bringing them around like that, or we could go all the way around, and then the queuing would be on the right side of the parking lot, and there'd be room for 20, 25 vehicles waiting for pickups in the afternoon. So, those are kind of some of the discussions still going on of, you know, the, the final internal circulation. But as far as impacting Farnham, Headwaters, and Fenway, there were no issues in the traffic study. Open it up for questions.
Questions for Kevin?
Joe, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Looking at your traffic pattern maps, you know, obviously, what you're saying makes sense. My questions are, it's confusing to me, but, so your bus, let's go back to that map, whoever just removed it, so we can see the traffic pattern map still.
Thank you, Bailey. I clearly wore the wrong color tonight.
All right, thank you. So, Joe, I'm looking at the red bus arrows going in and around the back, which you may or may not make that a one-way in and, and no traffic back out. My question is, what's going to keep the cars that are parked in that parking lot there, the new parking lot, from going out the bus traffic area?
Yep, so that's a great question. Really, it's the shortest path to get out of the site. Most of the traffic is either going to be going north on Fenway, or east on Headwaters to the regional connections of 97 and 61 respectively.
Yep, I understand.
And the shortest route for cars to do that is to take a right-out into the roundabout and then choose a direction, especially if there isn't much delay.
Sure. But of course, kids are impatient, and as kids are getting out of school and there's traffic that's backing up there, what's going to cause or stop those kids from going to the left and going out to Farnham?
Could potentially be a one-way sign and striped.
So, but at this point, you have no intention of making it one-way?
I, we, we're still in discussions of that with the city engineer.
And then, let's go back to your front parking lot down at the bottom there. What's going to keep the cars or the traffic from going right past your proposed one-way in, continuing down Headwaters, taking a right on Farnham and coming in that parking lot from the other side? Because they don't want to wait in the traffic that's maybe queuing?
Yep, so, we ran an in-depth traffic model, and I have that with me. I can show a clip of it. But we, we really identified that stream coming in, and during the hour around the start of school, there's about 300 vehicles coming into that access. So, if you think about a right-turn lane, that, that's very easily able to handle 300 vehicles in an hour, even with kind of that peaking right around the start of school.
But again, people are impatient, and so, there's two cars waiting to turn. Is there anything that's going to stop the cars from continuing down Headwaters, taking a right on Farnham and going in that other entrance?
Yep, so, we did assume that 15% of traffic would still use that existing access, as opposed to the existing amount, which would be about 50% of the proposed volume.
So, both accesses will be used, is what you're saying?
They, they do have the option to use that access still to turn into the site. We would expect that traffic to be less than the existing amount.
But it still can go in that, that entrance?
Correct.
Okay, that's why, just want to make sure. And what's going to keep cars from pulling on to Farnham, instead of pulling into the parking lot, stopping and letting the kids out, running across the grass into the parking lot, instead of pulling in that parking lot and waiting in all that traffic?
The goal is to not have waiting for the traffic. And Lila staff does a very good job, again, at the 11th Street.
Right now, you have nothing that's preventing it, right?
Rules that are set in place by Lila staff and not providing sidewalk connections, that could be a way to do that, but on the other hand, you do want sidewalk connections too for kids walking to school.
All right, you've answered my questions. Thank you, Joe.
Yeah, no problem.
Mike?
I've got a couple of questions for Joe. Joe, and maybe this is more for the city engineer, but you're a traffic engineer, right? So, I would like to hear your opinion of this. What would be the impact on the, on the roundabout if we were to put median cuts both on Headwater and Fenway to allow full turning movement into the site?
You're talking about right here?
There and to the north, too. On Fenway, on Fenway, yeah. What would be the impact if we cut the median there and allowed full movement, right turn in, right turn out, left turn, right turn, full movement? What would be the impact on the traffic circuit? I think it improved the traffic circulation and out of the site, but what would be the impact on that roundabout?
It would improve the operations of the roundabout. However, under the proposed traffic circulation, with traffic coming out, making a U-turn through the roundabout, the roundabout was at a level of service, I believe, B, might have been C, which is very acceptable for a roundabout during PM peak.
Well, is that based on future full development, or is that based on today's traffic?
Yep, so, with the future full development, the roundabout would still be operating at a level of service A. So, very little delay. And again, with the traffic clip you see here, it'll be apparent that the roundabout will continue to work very well.
But back to my question.
Yes.
What was your answer? If, if we put a median cut in there to allow?
It would improve operations, it would be a minimal improvement.
It, and it would improve operations to what? To the, both the roundabout and the site?
Correct. Yes. If you're add, if you're adding access to and from a site, it will, it'll improve the internal, and by adding those, you're taking traffic out of the roundabout. So, again, it would improve the roundabout, too.
So, it wouldn't have a negative impact on the roundabout?
No, not unless there was a queuing issue. So, if you made a cut in the median, you would have to have a left-turn lane, which I'm not sure if there's room to put a left-turn lane in with the existing median.
It's a local street, it's, I'm not sure that you would need that left-turn dedicated lane there.
Easy down there, Mike. We're, we're still talking hypothetical.
Do you get your answers question, your questions answered, Mike? Other questions?
In the, the second west entrance to, to, off of Farnham, not, yeah, right there. So, that is not an in?
It will continue to be an in and an out.
So, when, if someone goes in there, where do they go from there in the existing parking lot?
Yep, so, disregard this additional stacking. It will continue to follow a counterclockwise movement through the parking lot.
Okay.
So.
Second question is, then, what, what do you anticipate the traffic that will use the newly-opened Farnham?
The, on Headwaters, you're talking?
No, I'm talking about leaving, leaving the site.
So, both of these are existing accesses.
Okay, but if you make a right turn coming out of that one, yeah, that one?
Yep.
Make a right turn, continue up Farnham and go?
That will be a very small amount of traffic, because that will be just those residents going back into the neighborhood. There are no regional connections that way in the neighborhood.
Mike?
Okay, you said that with the new lots and everything, you're going to double the traffic?
Yep.
Okay. But yet, if you, you're saying you're cutting at the traffic from that south parking lot in half. So, if you're doubling the traffic and cutting that in half, that means now three-quarters of the traffic has to go somewhere else. Not just half, now it's half of a half.
No, no.
No?
Are we getting in the?
Well, yes, okay.
So, this is the existing amount of traffic coming into just this parking lot. We are doubling the enrollment, and we're also doubling parking, or even more than doubling parking. But our goal is to divide the new stream of traffic, which is twice as much of existing, between these two parking lots equally. So, there will still be the same amount of drop-offs, you know, at, at each point. Our shifting of traffic is the inward traffic, where we can now put 85% of it using this right-in, and we're reducing traffic, so it would end up being a third of traffic coming in to Farnham, from Farnham to the site.
Oh, just coming in that one entrance?
Correct.
Okay. The way you made it sound before to me was, you're cutting half of the traffic there.
No, it was just.
But you're doubling the traffic.
Yeah.
Okay, and then, to Mike over there, cutting the medians, Mike, that's extremely dangerous. People coming to the school, leaving school, rear-end accidents, people trying to get across. I think the one-way out down to the, the roundabouts are really safe. Everybody's going the same direction. But you start talking intersections, that's where the accidents, the, the bad accidents happen. Even though it's only for an hour in the morning, an hour in the evening, they have events going on on weekends and the evenings, and cutting the medians with no left-turn lanes or right-turn lanes, extremely dangerous. So, that's just my opinion on that.
So, Joe, students being students, and having two boys who went to Forest Lake High School in the free-for-all parking lot over there, are the students parking in the new lot and the teachers in the old lot? The reason I'm specifically asking this question is that I'm going to give the teachers the benefit of the maturity factor here versus 17- and 18-year-olds.
versus seventeen and eighteen-year-olds, which I was many years ago. Um, so if I have all adults parking in the old, the existing lot, we're not going to really have much of an issue coming out on Farnham.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. So that's the intent, but again, Dennis is coming up here, so.
He's sneaking up behind me here, but, uh...
Go ahead. I just wanted, we got an answer for you. And the answer is yes. That the student traffic will primarily use this new east lot there. That will be used primarily by students and staff. And the public, you know, parking will, will remain kind of, the, the use of the existing parking lot will remain pretty much as it is now.
And again, we wanted to make the student parking lots more of a forced route. So having student parking along these two rows coming into the lot, you're forced to take a right in at, off of Headwaters, and then you're forced to take a right out onto Fenway, just from the circulation of the parking lot. That is the fastest route, whether there's queuing or no queuing.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for the engineer? Mike?
One more. Uh, that south parking lot, that northeast corner we were talking about, where they, they make that cut in there? Is that just going to be, um, according to the diagram, it looks like you can come in that way and out that way, correct?
During the AM peak, it will just be an in, and that will be because of Lila staff out here directing traffic. Um, again, when there's not traffic, you know, high volumes of traffic coming in and out, you'll have the connection to the other parking lot.
Is there any way that they could just make that, when they come out of that south parking lot, a left turn only? So they can't come back out to Headwaters? Then they have to go up and around and out?
So this is a right-in only?
Right.
Um, by designing this where you can't really turn right, or it's a very hard movement to turn right, people will take the easier route at one of the other exits.
I was just wondering if you thought about maybe making that, as they come out of that south parking lot?
Yep, a no-right turn.
And then they have to go up through the, and be diverted out?
Yep, that's a, a good consideration.
That would, that would cut down at least some traffic out that way.
Yep.
Okay.
Here are no further questions. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Dennis?
Um, I'd like to make just a cou, go ahead.
One more thing. Did, did you guys want to see the, the video?
You guys got to see this.
You've teased this long enough.
Yeah, I, I said I would show it, so.
You got popcorn?
So these are the, uh, the AM peak, so vehicles coming into the site.
Is there a median going to be put in there then? And that one-way in, or not one-way in, but?
Oh, it's got to be marked.
Oh, that's just paint on here, okay.
Yep, so the, the gray are the actual links in the traffic model, kind of shown over the site plan. And so one, one spot is that, uh, after the drop-off in the east parking lot, is that U-turn coming back out. Um, there will be a little bit of queuing there as traffic comes in and kind of makes the U-turn out back to the right out onto Fenway. Um, but with proper signing and Lila staff out there directing traffic, we don't see that as an issue.
Your video shows a right out onto Headwaters.
Yes, that was, uh, put in there. There was no traffic on it, and we were just using that as a right-in. I'll skip ahead here. Over on the east lot, you can see that, uh, there will be a little bit of queuing in the AM peak, but it won't reach back into the parking lot. And you can see the operations of the roundabout are still very acceptable. So this is full build, um, for the AM peak.
Full build of Head, of the Headwaters?
Yep.
Development?
Yep. And you can see some traffic coming out off of Farnham. Any questions?
But that does not anticipate any right turns on Farnham to go up to the neighborhood?
Uh, in the AM peak, uh, it was projected that there would be zero, because, um, people coming from the Headwaters neighborhood, dropping off a kid, would likely continue on to a regional route away from the school. In the PM peak, it was assumed that, uh, there were about five to ten vehicles that would make that right out onto Farnham into the neighborhood after picking up a child from the school. Again, those are projections, and there's a certain amount of projections in traffic forecasts.
Thank you.
All right, thank you guys for your time.
I don't want to take a lot of extra time, but the other, I just want to address the other kind of main issue that, uh, has, that came up at the, uh, neighborhood meetings, not only on this, um, not only on this project, but the, the earlier one, was the placement, uh, and that has to do with the placement of the building on the site. And well, the, the, we took a little bit of heat, for good reason, um, on the placement of the eight-classroom addition, because we really couldn't, you know, we really couldn't show the, the future, uh, overall plan at that point. Uh, but I think this, you can see now from the way that the site, the site is laid out, that we've kept, uh, we've placed this addition so that it, it has, uh, minimal impact on the, um, the, the neighborhoods to the west. And it was a conscious effort on our part, again, to place the new parking lot on the east side of the, of the building there. The, the building mass, um, again, we've tried to keep that as compact as it could be. Um, this is not in your, um, in your, um, packet, but this is a, uh, just a quick sketch perspective that we did. Uh, this is an aerial looking from the northeast at the building. And the, this, of course, is the addition. This is the existing building back here, and, and the eight-classroom addition is back there. That's an aerial, and this is, um, this is a, this is an eye level looking at the bill. This is basically what you'd see from the east parking lot, looking at the building there, or what you'd see from Fen, you know, driving down Fenway.
Do you have one that shows us what it looks like from the neighborhood? From the, be the west side of the school?
Um, can you pull up the, the colored elevations?
So that would be the north?
Yeah, it's, it's that bottom elevation there. It's basically a two-story building of...
Slide down, Donovan, please.
That's, that's the elevation from, uh, the east or from Fenway. And then the one?
Above?
In the middle there. Though, actually, both of those in the middle there. One is, this shows the new addition, and one shows the whole, the new addition and the existing building. But that's the facade of the building that you would see from, from the west there. From the, essentially from the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Any questions at all, uh, at this point?
Questions?
Yeah, where was, on the north elevation, you talked about a, um, symbol of the mascot. Where, where?
Oh, our friendly dragon?
Yeah, where was that going to be?
It's gone.
Oh.
Where'd it go? It's probably not going to be there. It, there, they have, another, another idea has surfaced here, uh, on how to use that, that large wall there. We're going to put, we're going to put the dragon inside the building now.
Other question from Gary?
Trash enclosure, how is it, how was that chosen?
Well... Closest, you know, close, the closest spot on the site where we could put it, where it would still be accessible, you know, where we could still use that same turnaround pad there, and it's closest to the kitchen, you know, the kitchen. There really isn't a spot, um, to be able to put it right up next to the building. That wasn't real well-done when it was done initially. It wasn't, actually, it wasn't large enough. And so we've, uh, you know, we've designed a larger, uh, trash enclosure that has room for three dumpsters. And our plan is to, to put a, uh, what we call a living wall around it. It's going to be a, a, a solid planting wall, kind of a, probably a vine thing on a trellis-type thing, so that it will, um, you won't see a wall. You'll see planting around it.
It'll be hidden from the public, so to speak, from that side.
Well, so, yeah, behind the wall. It's not going to be hidden, Gary, you know. But it would make no, it would make no sense to put it around someplace else on the other side of the site because of the distance that it would, it needs to be near the kitchen, because that's where most of the trash is coming from.
Mike?
Okay, I, I agree with the living wall, it looks great and everything, but how about December, January, February? What, what is actually?
Well, there'll be, there'll, there will be a physical, there'll, there will be a, a solid, either masonry or metal wall, or, you know, some decorative wall behind it, you know.
That hasn't been decided yet.
Well, but we want to, I want it, we wanted it to be more than a concrete block wall. That's what we're saying. Because it is right out there and kind of...
But it hasn't been decided yet. That's why, it just says living, living wall.
Right, we, we didn't, we haven't done a detail of that that we've presented to them, but that, of course, will be done, yeah.
Any other questions?
Deliveries to the building, um, whatever the art supplies, books, uh, you know, where, where are the delivery trucks?
Book, books?
Or?
I'm sorry, I just couldn't resist. I'm a grappa too.
Yeah, well, deliveries, where, where do they come?
Well, right now, they come in, uh, this, this drive, um, off of, uh, Head, Headwaters Parkway there. And they, they turn around that kind of large rectangular section of asphalt right there. They come, they, if they're, if they're backing up to the building, they, you know, they pull into that and back up to the building, and then they, um, and then they can turn around there and, and head out. But that's where, where ninety percent of the, of the deliveries, uh, to the, the site are right there.
The southeast corner?
Right, at the southeast corner.
Good. Thank you. This is a public hearing. We invite anyone who wishes to speak to this, application. Please step forward to the lectern, state your name and address, and tell us for a couple of minutes your thoughts on this project. So with that, we will, and then we will hear from everyone. When everyone has finished speaking, we will then close the public hearing, and it'll come back to the commissioners for a decision. So with that, we'll officially open the public hearing. Does anyone wish to speak? We do ask you to state your name and address for the record, please.
Todd Tevlin, two zero one three four, Farnham Avenue North, Forest Lake. Um, a couple of things. Four years ago, it was supposed to be just a small school and limited number of kids and whatever, and all of a sudden, it's blooming into seven, eight-hundred kids. His numbers were only three hundred people, or three hundred vehicles. If there's seven hundred people coming in, not counting staff, if there's seven hundred people coming in, six buses, that call it fifty a bus, that's three hundred. I come up with four hundred people we're missing, not, not counting over and above where those numbers, I'm sure, finessed on the low side, number one. Number two, in regards to traffic, if you start finessing them in off the one, off of Headwaters, and not let them go all the way through, which I know they're talking about letting them go all the way through, they're going to, is what Dennis said, the path of least resistance, they're going to end up going over to Farnham, guaranteed. I work for the City of Maplewood, I do work in construction, and we've talked about the opening of, of Farnham up on the north end once the rest of that's, housing into the west is being done. People only know one way in, one way out. I see it day after day. They've come in past you, you'll be patching the road, and they go right past you, in and out, in and out, when there's multiple ways of getting into these sites, or residences, excuse me. And they will only go in one way. I don't know what it is, but it's like they love tar on their car or something. And then, this is going to sound bad, but with all due respect, I want some of what Joe is smoking or drinking, because when you come out of the school, onto Farnham, you're telling me only five cars are going to be going north once that gets opened up? There's absolutely no way that can be realistic. Out of three hundred other cars? There's no way only five are going to go up there. And that was one of our, our problems back when they were talking about opening up Farn, Farnham to the north, which is currently closed. Once they open that up, all that, not all, I mean, I understand that, but a lot of that traffic is going to go up and go up and go towards Creek Trip and try to get out. And as Dennis said, path of least resistance. If it's blocked up down on Headwaters and the roundabout, where are they going to go? They're going to go where the least resistance is, and that's going to be up Farnham. And so I'm, I'm against adding on more than we already have, because they haven't followed through with some of the other stuff of trees and, and, uh, playgrounds and things like that that were supposed to, from what I understand, supposed to be put in four or five years ago, and none of that stuff has happened. And now, and this may be sound bad yet again, but they're going to cram even more kids, more building into this residential area and make it commercial. I just think it's a little ridiculous. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Yeah, Jeff Beulah, I live at fifty-two fifty-seven Two Hundred Street. I'm on the south side of Two Hundred Street, so I look at the school every day. One thing I don't really, um, I'd like to know where the end of the construction goes to the end of their lot line north.
So from, if I, and I don't mean to interrupt you here, sir, but from the edge of that parking lot to the lot line?
Yeah.
It's forty-eight seventy feet?
Four hundred eighty-seven feet. Okay. And, um, just to get back to the previous person who was talking, as far as using Farnham, because I notice I catch myself using Farnham more than I probably should, and I live right there off of Fenway, because the light off of ninety-seven and Fenway is pretty long. And if I'm going to Forest Lake, taking thirty-five, I'm going through Farnham, so. On that. And on Two Hundred Street, as of right now, there's nineteen kids off of Two Hundred Street. So you want, want to consider that. As far as mixing some high school kids driving through, and that's really about it.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak to the issue?
Uh, Mike Devine, I'm at fifty-two thirty-six Two Hundred Street. I'm basically right across from Jeff, so I'm looking out my front windows through his yard to the school. I had a lot of questions about this four years ago when they brought up bringing this school into a residential area to begin with. They promised that they would have a fence on the north side of their property line. They were, they told us that might be a year or two until they could afford to do the fence and the ball fields they mentioned. And the playground, they mentioned they would like to get in in the next year or two when they could afford it. Apparently, they can't quite afford that stuff yet, because none of that is there. Right now, during the week, if you go sit on Two Hundred Street, there are either three or five kids, depending on the day, that their parents drop them off on what is now a dead end, the north end of Farnwell, Farnham. They drop their kids off there right now to walk the rest of the way to Lila, because they don't want to deal with the traffic, I'm assuming, down there. So when we double that, um, I'm not thinking those five parents are going to start taking the other direction. And I'm thinking there's going to be a heck of a lot more of them going up north on Farnham. I'm not sure about either their math or my math, but when they're doubling the school and doubling the students, but four times four is six apparently in their book with the buses, I don't believe that's going to be the case either. There, we already have, I believe, forty-five more houses that they're building to the west of Lila, that we've been pro, well, we kind of worked with the city when they... of Lila, that we've been, well, we kind of worked with the city when they came in with that development, that they're not going to open up Farnham until they start on that final phase to not get the traffic through there. Because them are all residential, it's all residential streets they got to go through to basically get up to Quick Trip. That is the fastest way to Thirty-five E, and that is the way, I would be willing to bet, close to half of those parents, when they drop their kids off in the morning, are going to be going through that neighborhood to go to Thirty-five E, because I'm guessing a good majority of them head to Thirty-five to go to work in the morning. So our traffic is a huge issue. The promises that they made when they first came in here with only the first through third grade or fifth grade students, I have trouble believing that four years later, this is a brand-new plan. It seems to me this is probably the next version of their plan, and they're cramming a heck of a lot into what it's supposed to be, a residential neighborhood, and residential houses. So I don't think there's room for it. I'm also really curious what they're doing, you know, why they haven't fulfilled the promises they made when they originally came into the neighborhood, to put in this playground and ball fields and fences and trees to buffer the music, or the, the noise, which right now is, the, the kids are outside playing their music, they're marching down the street, actually, I believe, two weeks ago. The traffic is a huge issue. I don't think there is room there for this school, much less, from what I've understood from the Forest Lake comprehensive plan, is Headwaters is going to eventually go all the way to Thirty-five, in who knows how long, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five years. That's a heck of a lot more students that are going to be using all that area, and if anybody thinks they're going to leave that school and go left to Headwaters, and then left again to head down to the roundabout, and wait for the buses and everybody that came out of that northern parking lot, and eventually get into the roundabout and go down Fenway Avenue, sorry, I'd be willing to bet you less than a third of the cars are actually going to do that. We have a ton of traffic going in there already, and we've made complaints and talked about, between the YMCA and the, the library going in, going in there, or the, the government center there. There's a ton of people that leave from there and go through our neighborhoods. So to add all of the school traffic, not to mention seventeen and eighteen-year-old high school kids driving, I can't picture a worse scenario in our neighborhood for, to add all this traffic, and, you know, what we should have there is thirty-five, forty homes. And that's what our streets were built for. They weren't built for eight hundred kids plus, plus staff in that area. So I really hope you guys consider that and look at that, because when they came to the west four years ago, it was a big deal about how young the kids were, and how little the staff, and how no traffic's going to be affected, and all of that. Since then, the county has, for whatever reason, I don't know if it's from Ryan working for us or what, they've put in the roundabout because of the traffic issues. And now they want to double the school again. So I really hope we can get better answers, or just a no at this point, until we get them, to do anything more with their process, and maybe fulfill the promises they started with, before they're asking for more. So thank you for your time.
Hello. My name is Brian Nelson. I live at 5235 200th Street North, right across from Mike, and right next to Mr. Buehler, Jeff Buehler here. I just moved up here about four years ago, from North St. Paul, when North St. Paul built their new high school. Okay, I lived right across the street from there. I lived that nightmare. I look at the traffic flow and all the studies, and I listen to the answers, and I believe that's what it was, and I hear a lot of different things like that. When you get these kids involved out there, that's all going to change. None of that traffic study makes any sense to me. And I've heard you guys ask questions that I don't understand this. Well, when you get all these kids in these cars, they're going to do what they want. They're going to, they're going to go down the wrong way, they're going to jump over, over the curbs. They talked about, when you park next there, what's going to prevent them from just pulling up on Farnham and, and going, you know, over the, you know, not having a sidewalk access? Baloney. They're going to still do it. What I'm really concerned with is the kids now, when, when this makes, this is going to be difficult for them, so why are they not going to start parking on our streets? And walking, like they were saying, cutting through the yards, and walking across the field? That's going to happen too. So another thing is, what's the ten-year projection here? What are they going to, what, what's Lila going to try to do next? Frankly, I don't understand why that school is trying to expand anyway. I thought there was a pretty decent high school in this city. I don't know if there's problems out there, or what's going on, but why is this other school, why do they have to go? When we moved in here, we were told it was fourth, fifth, and sixth grade kids. Well, how much damage can they do, really? But now you're bringing a high school in? I, you know what? I didn't even realize there was a graduating class of high school students from this for the last year here. So maybe I wasn't informed, maybe I didn't ask questions, I don't know, but this thing seems to be really blowing up. But I think you're going to see a lot of neighborhood problems when this starts occurring. I'm really concerned about the kids that will start parking in our neighborhoods, and walking through, and the minute you say something to them for cutting through your yard, or what have you, I think we've already had one of our neighbors get their house egged from somebody dropping kids off on Farnham, and they said something to, why are you doing this? Next night, their house got egged. So we don't really have anything, I mean, we don't have any protection from that. I, I just don't see where it's needed, I don't see why we're even going here, why are we spending that kind of money for this? Is it really something that's needed in this community? I, I'm not so sure it is. I don't think, if this goes through, I don't think that we'll be in Forest Lake to watch it happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak to the issue? I'll ask one more time, does anyone else wish to speak to the issue? Seeing no one come forward, we will close the public hearing portion of the meeting, and bring it back to the commissioners for a decision.
Can I ask one question of Donovan? One of the questions that was brought up is, is the reason that the roundabout was put in there in the first place. Do you have some background on why that roundabout ended up right there?
It was part of the original Headwaters PUD, to be constructed, and this road is, is designed to accommodate something like fifteen thousand vehicles per day, so it can, it can accommodate, you know, all the traffic that's expected to go through it from Headwaters, and then, of course, eventually heading west to the frontage road toward the interstate.
So it was planned before Lila?
Correct.
Period?
Other discussion? Kevin?
Yeah, I just, I have major concerns. You know, a lot of us have been on the planning commission here for a long time, and, and as we've seen these plans come through, and I, I certainly am empathetic with all the neighbors, and, and obviously, the school is, is a good thing for our community. This parking and this traffic really concerns me, and, and I totally agree with the, the representatives that are here from the neighborhood. There is no way, unless we do something about those entrances and exits on Farnham, that we're going to keep traffic off of Farnham as that road goes through. And I, and I, and I know we're probably not looking at that right now, but, you know, it's going to, every, every time they come back in, there's a new change, and there's a new addition, and, and, and I think we have to look a little bit further than what we're looking at right now, as to what are we going to do with this traffic as it develops and grows? And are we going to let Farnham go all the way through into Two Hundredth? And, and we know it's going to happen, we know that traffic's going to come down Two Hundredths, we know the traffic's going to go out on Farnham. And as Headwaters does go through, I know a lot of the traffic will alleviate that way, but those two entrances and exits on Farnham, I think are a real challenge that we should consider.
Thank you. Good.
Well, I, I agree, I think they're, the traffic is number one in the neighborhood there. I don't have the answers for it right now, other than, you know, one way in and one way out. But my new concerns are, what happened to the old promises with trees and playground equipment and fencing and ball fields? And right on here, it says previously approved ball fields. What, what's going on with that stuff? You know, I mean, if they say they're going to do this, and then they don't follow through, you know, what's going to say that they're going to do this, and then not follow through with that too? I, I guess, I just need more answers to some of the old promises. I don't know, I don't know, if I was on here, I wasn't here four years ago, so I don't know what was promised, and what was a time period or timeframe for that stuff to be done. But if they, if they've got money for all this other stuff, I think maybe they should take into some of the neighborhood concerns, and take care of that first, before they keep adding on.
Eric?
Could we ask Ken to come back up and talk about the promises, for one thing? And secondly, secondly, the philosophy of the school, or what the school's all about, if it's in competition with the public school, if it's, where, where the, how, why is it growing at this point, where the public school seems to struggle with their finances?
It's a good question. I don't know that I have that answer. I can go back to four years ago, and I believe we have planted every tree that the city required. I don't know of any that were promised beyond what that first landscaping plan was, which was pretty significant. I think we planted a couple hundred trees, or something similar to that. In terms of the ball fields, we play ball on it every single day with our students. We do not have the resources of the city or somebody else to put up backstops. We do have soccer goals out there that the community uses and is welcome to use. I see kids playing out there when I'm here on the weekend, and other times, we've not kept them off. They're very lovely fields for frisbee, for soccer, for other games. We play softball out there. We don't have the money that the traditional district has, that the city has, for their playgrounds. We asked four years ago to do a cooperative playground, and that the money that the development was getting, and the city was getting from the property that has to be dedicated to parkland. We talked about the possibility of doing a joint playground, that was not realized. We still plan on putting some of those things in, but finances are an issue for charter schools. In terms of why are we there? We provide language, immersion for kids, that isn't provided really anywhere else in the state in terms of Mandarin and Chinese. We draw families to this community from eighteen different school districts, that come here every day and spend money. We provide an education that is, at this point, Minnesota-known, nationally-known. We do have a relationship with Forest Lake. Talked with Steve Massey last week about doing some cooperative things. We offer languages that they don't, and other things that their kids might like. We would love to do some of the things that they do with, you know, extracurriculars. We don't have the facilities, we don't have the money for sports teams, we don't have a hockey team, we don't have a football team. Our kids come for other things. We are committed to seeing, as best as we can, that the traffic doesn't go there. If that requires one ways, I don't personally have a problem with that. I think we can monitor that. We are there at Eleventh Avenue, and once, in a blue moon, somebody drops a kid off on Eleventh Street, and I don't know if you've been there recently, or Eleventh Avenue, I guess it is, that's a pretty busy road in the morning, and it makes us pull our hair out. But we, if we know them, talk to them, we see them, we really do monitor, and high school kids, you're right, are pretty rambunctious, but again, if we attack it properly, I think we can have an impact on it. And just the fact about the students using the east lot, they can't get to the lower lot and back out if there's traffic going the other direction during the busy times. During the odd times, weekends or other times, there is an issue, and they're going to go when you aren't there. But during those busy times, the traffic flow itself will prevent people coming from the east lot back into the lower lot and out on Farnham. And if we have one way for buses during at least the bus hours, which are the same times that the kids are coming, we'll have people there monitoring. They aren't going to be coming back out the entrance to the bus lot. We're committed to supervising those pieces, and doing the best we can. Are there going to be kids that get past it? Yes. Are there going to be kids that are egging houses, for whatever reason? Yes. We can't prevent that, but we provide a service to the community, we want to fit there. I, that, that whole housing development was opened up with the starting of the school that brought the services across and into that area. I mean, we, from the beginning, were designed as part of that bigger plan. From somebody gave the approval of that, and, and thought that it was a good idea. Yes, we started as fourth, fifth, and sixth graders, and that was our absolute intent to camp it there. And very shortly after we capped it, I mean, after we built this building to, for the over-expansion from the lower school, and this is nothing against the district, I, I think Steve Massey, I think Linda Mattson before him, are absolutely top-notch people. But our students left sixth grade and went to the Forest Lake schools for seventh grade, and did a, an immersion program there, and some other activities. And we were, again, not only bringing kids from eighteen different districts to our school, but our sixth graders were going to Southwest Junior High at a rate of ninety-five percent. So ninety-five percent of the kids that finished us stayed in Forest Lake and continued there. Because of their budget cuts, they're trying to get more money now, they were unable to continue the programs in language that our parents are demanding. The International Baccalaureate and Immersion Together is done in a few places around the country, we're one of them. And our parents said, we're leaving altogether if you can't provide a secondary education for our kids. And if Forest Lake can't do it, you need to do it. And at that point, we made the decision that we had to go seven-twelve. But it was our intent not to necessarily do that. And you can say no to this, and we can look other places, or we can do other things, it's your decision. We're here to serve the community, we're here to provide an opportunity that for those that choose us is something they can't get, basically, anyplace else.
Couple questions for you. One, there's talk of a fence on the north side?
I think there was talk of a fence, and we're happy to do that. For one thing, we were still waiting for the pond, there was no pond there, if you remember. That was just a field, and we were told we could use that until they did the pond and some other pieces. And the road hasn't gone through, so I guess in our minds, we were thinking it wasn't an issue. I mean, you're, are there kids actually walking through the yards to our school at this point, because there's no fence? I, I'm, I'm asking an honest question. We will, we will deal, we will deal with the fence.
I think the answer to that is yes, but I don't know what the numbers are.
So would the fence be part of this project, then?
I'll be very honest, it has not been discussed, but I'm not above discussing it, I mean, below.
And how about this long-term playground equipment? Do we have a rough timeline? Two years, three years, five years?
We, we have some money for an outdoor education system. Again, it was our intent that those were going to be for, five and sixth grade kids, which need the kind of playground that I think you're talking about. And with the older students, it needs to be a different kind of playground, that is more physical exercise and, and different kinds of equipment that kids can go through and do other kinds of things. And so as we transitioned from strictly an elementary building to a, a middle school and high school building, those thoughts have been, been repurposed. But I guess I'm confused that we were considered to be the people that are providing a playground for the community. I, I am still kind of wondering what that connection and responsibility is on us.
The residents' concern really is that there's been statements made in the past, and is, is Lila committed to statements that they feel they've heard? And to continue and improve being a neighbor, I think is the overarching here.
Right. And our goal is to let our resources be used by the community, absolutely. At this point, building a playground suited for little kids is probably not going to happen. Will something be there? Absolutely. But money is an issue. But money is an issue. We have, uh, some grant monies that are sitting there waiting until the building is developed to do some outdoor education kinds of things and some other interesting pieces that the community is certainly welcome to use on the weekends. We do plan on expanding our FAED, um, ideas of, of playground in terms of older kids, pieces of equipment that can be used and fun and, and volleyball. We've had volleyball out there, uh, in the fields for the last couple of summers. To me, that's playground kind of stuff. And so, I think we, we maybe need to put our heads together on that as to what actually would be useful to the community that it's also useful to us.
And is this, one more question for ya. Is this site now, and maybe it's a better question for Dan, is considered built out besides a tweak for a room or something? Are we done? I mean, you guys have had some impressive growth.
Right. And, and here's, and this comes back to why do we need it and why so big? When we had to transition from no place for our sixth graders to go in terms of learning more language and being exposed to the International Baccalaureate program, we didn't necessarily grow. Our lower school is no bigger than it's ever been in terms of how many kids come in each grade. But those kids now, instead of going to Forest Lake, are staying with us. And so, we have a hundred students at each grade level moving forward. And so, we will, that's where you get the seven-hundred kids. Fifth grade through twelfth grade is about that. Some grades are a little more, some grades are a little bit less. It's not that we are growing, it's that we're providing the programming rather than Forest Lake for the seven-twelve kids. And it has, I mean, we have to have a place to put 'em. And we are talking to Forest Lake of doing cooperative both ways and trying to do some things that are together and that we would have, um, some, some nice cooperation, some nice, I think, better programming for all of our kids.
I understand that, but is your site built, physically built out after this?
Well, I, I guess what I was trying to say, and I'm sorry, I didn't answer it correctly, is we don't plan on any more kids other than the kids moving through that are moving through.
Thank you.
We think this facility will facilitate that.
Eric?
For the applicant, sorry. The, the depiction was that there would be six buses and somebody alluded that the buses might run at less than capacity. And I just wanted to make sure that I understood correctly from what I remember when I sat on the, the school board here, is that the buses all jointly go over to, like, the high school and then those that are going to Lila all get on. So the buses that arrive at your facility are probably at or very close to capacity. Is that still true?
Absolutely, it is true. But I, I'll, you know, the six, it certainly could be seven or seven and, you know, maybe it's eight, I don't know, but it wouldn't be more than that. It's not that you have buses coming like they do to Forest Lake from a community and then dropping off twenty kids. All of our kids are brought with Forest Lake buses to, right now, southwest or central, where they get on buses that come just to our building. And so, every bus that comes to our building is very full. And we have seven-hundred and fifty kids, um, something like that, a little over seven-hundred at the lower school. And we have, it's either five or six buses in the afternoon. I think it's five, actually.
Hour ago, it was four.
Huh?
It was four, an hour ago.
Uh, at the lower school, we never talked about that an hour ago.
Let's, let's keep the conversation up here, please.
Yeah. Um, and again, it's how full you want 'em. I mean, the, the, if it's two to a seat, you've got fifty, fifty-five kids. If you put three in a seat, you're up to, you know, seventy-five. Um, and so, it can be six. We work closely with John Gray and we adjust that number as, as need. But it, it would not be much more than that and...
And that answers...
It's twice a day for ten minutes.
That answers my question. I wanted to differentiate that it's different than, like the, the traditional high school where you have thirty to fifty buses coming in, which is a very different scenario. Um, the next question I had, somebody had mentioned, um, that the community would be spending money on this. Um, as I recall, charter schools are funded only through federal and state sources and then maybe out of generosity of donors. But you don't pull any tax money from property taxes like school levies and school bonds do, correct?
Correct.
So this project and any other project that happens at your facility is not spending money that otherwise would be spent at City Hall on our streets or the other public schools?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, that's all I had for the applicant.
Mike?
Um, for the applicant, um, can you talk about the number of students in nine through twelve? Um, now and in the future? And the business, you, you talked about the idea of a lottery. Can you talk about that a little bit, what you're thinking?
Sure. Um, when we went seven-twelve, you, we had to open up the entire high school because you have kids at so many different levels of needing different math classes, different science classes, even though they're in the same grades. And so, we opened with not a single senior and ten, when I say opened, three years ago when the school here started. And I think we had, like, um, ten sophomores and juniors. Last, this last year, we did graduate five twelfth graders and we had about twenty, I believe, juniors and sophomores. But coming behind them are the students I was talking about moving up through our own grades. Those are kids that have chosen to come, uh, after the fact, although some of our kids that had been going to Forest Lake came back. Um, and so, that's where roughly a hundred students per grade level are just marching toward twelfth grade. So that's how we get to the, that number. And, and, you know, it'll be up or down depending on the year a little bit. What was the second part of that question?
Well, the second part, I guess, relates to parking, then. Uh, do you have enough parking on-site? And this might be for staff, too. Is there enough parking on staff to handle the students?
Well, and, and that's a good question. And it depends a little bit, again, on our demographics. Because we're drawing from so many different districts and we have parents that are driving an hour in the morning and an hour in the afternoon, I think that we're going to continue to have more, uh, people being dropped off than actual students driving, but there certainly will be students driving. And I guess our question or point was, we will limit the parking based on what we are able to provide. And so, yes, the, um, there would be a lottery as to who got a bus ticket or not, you know, a parking ticket, and they would have to pay for that. Uh, Forest Lake charges a fairly significant sum to park in their parking lot. Uh, those of you that have kids there probably know what that price is, I don't. Um, but we're also not opposed to expanding that parking lot somewhere in the future if it really is inadequate. And to the east side there, we would be able to do that. I mean, again, I, I don't want somebody to come back four years later and say, "You promised more parking." I mean, we want it to work. We don't want, we don't want people to be unhappy or perking on the park, on the streets. We will monitor that as best as we can and support you from a, a school management point of view in terms of, you know, getting the kids to understand that's not appropriate. And if they didn't get a parking ticket, I mean, a, yeah, parking pass, maybe they don't get one in the future with some other, um, some sort of, uh, plan in place that discourages that. It's probably gonna happen once or twice. I think that's where the city comes in a little bit, um, that we put some reasonable no parking during school hours where we need to and that we get a little bit of help from the police. They come and sit and watch our morning traffic pretty regularly at the lower school. I mean, again, if you've got a policeman, even if it's only twice a week, sitting for that twenty minutes, the kids come and parking, sitting on a couple of the city streets, it's a pretty big no-no. You know, I mean, I, I think that we can work on this together to be proactive. Is it gonna be smooth and automatic? None of us are planning on that. Nothing's been smooth or automatic for our school yet. Um, so, uh, we're prepared for hard work.
Yeah, my preference would be if, if, if we need more parking, I think we should do it right now. And I don't know if the staff has took a hard look at that or not, but I, I would want to avoid the lottery system. The lottery system's only gonna encourage people to park on the street, kids that don't have tickets. And, um, I, I guess, you've got room, there's room there now, and I don't know what the answer is. But if the answer, if, if, if we're short on parking, I think we should be providing it right now.
And my only response to that would be, we would like to wait and see in that it, again, we are already cutting so many things out of this next project because we can't afford them, um, that it's just something else you would have to cut out of the project to provide that until we know if that's going to be an issue or not. And for sure, it's not gonna be an issue for two or three years and that we've got, you know, fifty ninth through twelfth graders, uh, maybe showing up, but maybe it's seventy, I don't know, next year. Uh, so it'll be a while before those hundreds start filling into, um, ten, eleven, and twelve. And, and not all tenth graders can drive, so you're really talking eleven and twelve and maybe half a tenth grade. And, and so you're talking, in my thinking, two-hundred and fifty kids. And then I'll be real surprised if at least half of them aren't being driven.
Well, then, maybe at the very least, we show proof of parking here. We show, uh, an expanded parking, uh, lot, an area that, that can accommodate additional parking. Maybe that's an answer that can be done. But I, I, I'm sensitive to your, your financial limits and your budgets, but I'm also sensitive to the residential neighborhood we have here. And the more we can, uh, uh, be sensitive to that traffic impact on that neighborhood, I, I, I think that's what it's gotta be, gotta do that.
Eric?
Donovan, um, I, I don't wanna try to dig it up in the packet right now, but I, I wanna say that I recall that the parking on-site for this facility, as proposed, exceeds that of the standards in our zoning. Is that correct?
Correct. Um, what, you know, there's, there's a formula for all schools. And high schools, of course, have additional parking requirements, assuming that students will drive. In this case, um, there is, Lila's designed a classroom capacity for three-hundred students, for those upper grades, the ten through twelve. And, um, and so, what those classrooms do, do generate is seventy-five additional parking spaces. So what they have, um, is a total of one-hundred and eighty-nine, um, proposed, which is twenty-seven more than the spaces that, that, the code requires.
Thank you. Mr. Chair members, I, I, I see this concern with parking, particularly in the neighborhood on the street. There's, there's no question. But, um, our, our own codes tell us that this is sufficient here. You know, I, I think that, um, I, I don't think we can do much more than what they've done. They're, they were, they're doing what we've asked them to do by our zoning code. Um, if that isn't sufficient, then we need to look at changing our zoning code for future projects. Um, and if it's insufficient for this neighborhood, um, I think the city has other options of making residential-only parking in that area, no parking during certain times of day. There, there's, there's quite a bit of options they have. The, the city could look at not having Farnham go all the way through. There's, there's probably a number of options, but, um, I think we should really move on beyond this parking piece. A couple other comments I have on, on, uh, the project and some comments that I heard. The, um, somebody had mentioned that Headwaters would eventually go all the way to I-35 in the comp plan. It, it gets close, it would be great if it did, but Mindat wouldn't allow us to actually put it to thirty-five. So it'll go to Hornsby, which is the, the frontage road essentially just to the east in Columbus there. And Headwaters is somewhat pointed in a southwesterly direction, um, on the plan. It's a plan, so we don't have it all drawn out, but that would probably push some traffic, I would guess, in that direction. But it's probably not gonna be a major collector to thirty-five because the shorter routes are gonna go north, probably both on Everton and Fenway. I would think primarily Fenway. So I wanted to mention that. There was, um, some comments about, uh, a school belongs in a commercial zone. I think a, a second comment was that, um, it doesn't belong in a residential area. And this is so contradictory to my, my belief. I, I think that schools do belong in residential areas. It's the most ideal place to put it. And it is what our zoning code says as well. Um, our zoning code is, is very specific that schools like this or like public schools are allowed in residential areas. And it, and it has a whole ton of different standards. And one of those standards is, they come forward with a plan to a planning commission like this. And we look at and say, "Are they following these codes?" And quite frankly, um, this project is following nearly every code that we have written. I, um, I'm hard-pressed to find one that they don't follow. Um, the last comment I wanna make, um, is that, the, the comments about rambunctious kids in high school and, um, you know, would, would this cause that? I'm sure there's rambunctious kids in every high school. And quite frankly, I have spent nearly twenty years in education. I've been a public school board member. I sat on the Metro Axu Service Cooperatives Board. I sat on the State Education Board. Um, I've worked in higher ed for fifteen years as well and regularly visit high schools. And I've visited Lila several times, once during the day. It is probably one of the best, well-run, high schools I have seen with some of the most professional kids. I, I have, I have very little concern that the staff won't be able to address things that the kids will listen to at that particular school. This is not a school for, um, kids that are in trouble or didn't make it somewhere else. This is a school that drives parents that are devoted to making sure their children have a specific type of education. Whether one person believes that that's the right type of education or not, those are probably some of the most dedicated parents you can possibly have. And that's what teachers and administrators of education dream about, is parents that are actively involved in their kid's life. Every kid that goes to Lila, the parents specifically chose to put them there. I will guarantee you that that alone has a far greater impact on the quality of the children that are attending this school than any other school, for that one mere fact. All of that said, I'm not hearing any concerns that we should do anything other than staff-recommended. And I will move that the Planning Commission approve the Conditional Use Permit Amendment for Lakes International Language Academy with staff recommendations.
Do I have a second?
I would second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Mike?
Well, I didn't think we were finished with the discussion. We're just cutting it off right here.
You're always free to make a motion at any point.
And we can still have discussion.
That is correct.
Well, I had a couple of questions for Ken, that's... You made a motion and a second, and now it's up for discussion about the motion.
I don't think there's anything that stops you from asking them.
Okay. Ken, could you step up to the podium, please? I don't think anybody here's gonna argue that you don't provide a great service to the community. It's a great school. My, my grandchildren go there. Um, and I don't think anybody's gonna agree or disagree that we don't think it's the buses that are causing the problem. There's five, six buses. If there was ten buses every morning, I don't think anybody's gonna argue that point. It's the car traffic. I, I, I just have a, I don't know the background with what was promised years ago and what hasn't been fulfilled. You say you can't afford backstops, but yet you're putting in a multimillion-dollar building. You know, you were, you were here just not too long ago asking for Phase One. And when we mentioned about, "Well, how about if you moved it here, moved it there?", couldn't do it. But now you're putting a building, Phase Two, in the back. So, did you already have that planned, Phase Two, back when you presented Phase One to us?
Not where it was. I mean, not, no plans other than that we knew that we were going to need that. I mean, this is the whole point of this, is that we have a hundred kids moving forward. When we no longer had a place to put them, we either need to add here or someplace else. We have been actually thinking about building other places or renting land rather than building or those kinds of pieces. And in this last year and a half, have slowly come to the conclusion that really, both financially... to the conclusion that really, both financially and for the benefit of the kids, rather than a third, complete, different school site, that takes even more money, because then you've got two administrations, you've got two of this and two of that, that this was a logical place. Did we have it laid out what that was going to look like? No, we know we needed the eight classrooms to survive for a couple of years, and that was our plan, and still maybe to do something else or not, but we, in looking for the financing, it always seems to come back to money, we also learned that we could not do Phase One, and then go back out for new money in Phase, in two or three years later, for anyplace else, that we needed to put the two together and have a one ask to the banks with the bonds and those kinds of pieces. And that is why it looks like, I, I understand how it looks, you do one and you come back six months later, that was not a plan. The plan was is to come back a couple of years, maybe later, if this is where we absolutely decided on continuing to add, or to look for something else, but in the meantime, we're forced with, we've got a plan out here for eight classrooms that we need to do, and it's been delayed now long enough, again, because of money, that we're doing portables even for that year, but that the only way we were going to survive was to put Phase One and Phase Two, in order to get the money, to have enough money to completely build out where we can have our kids continue through. So I understand what it looks like, it, it's the reality that we've had to work through that gets us to this point.
My, my last question. Um, I want to go here. You say you have all, uh, what do you consider outdoor education? You've got money for outdoor education, you've got funding for it, what is outdoor education?
And, and when you say we have funding for it, we have a parent who has a grant, uh, available, that, that's there, it, it, it means that you get to do your studies outside, and you can do things out there that you can't do in the building, for whatever reason, uh, but it also gives, uh, in the spring and the fall, uh, an alternative place for kids to go, art students to paint the scenery, uh, science kids to check on bugs and different things and work on them right out there in the classroom, the art teacher to go out and, and make art out of wood things, but to do it in a setting that is conducive to stimulating kids' minds, it's just another place that provides, um, inspiration for kids, and it's not taking a single dollar that we are getting from the state or anyplace else, it's not taking any dollars that we can spend any other way. It's a family that really believes in those kinds of things, that is giving us money to do it and add it to our program.
So it's an individual family?
Well, it's a foundation, yeah.
Okay, a foundation, now that seems to be a little different then, and is it on the school property where they do all this, or do they go to this?
No, no, we plan on building an area on the school property somewhere, and we're trying to build it into the design.
But it's not built yet?
No.
Okay.
And, and they gave us money to do one at both sites, so the lower school will get some sort of outdoor education setting, it, it just means a, a, a place that kids can go and do anything, they could do inside, outside, for the difference of inspiration, for lack of a better word, and for some things that you can't do inside, in terms of painting landscapes, and in terms of, you know, finding, you know, you know, third graders finding bugs in the ground, and then putting them under a microscope right there and then, uh, to study them, and, and just things like that.
And, and how long has that funding been available to the children, or the school?
We, we received the grant, Julie, can you help me, a year ago?
Um, last fall.
Last fall.
Okay.
Um, and, um, they're waiting as we develop the high school plans, because as long as we're building at the same time, we would like it to fit into this, and, and our, our idea right now, you know, they talked about that tall wall to the north, um, is to maybe do something just beyond that, so that they could actually, uh, have a projector out there and project what they're working on, on that big wall, um, just, because it'd be kind of cool and neat, I guess, to see what you're doing on a big screen like that, but it's, it's not any educational dollars, um, that we have access to from, for anything else.
Thank you. Eric?
I just have a couple of things. Number one, uh, we've talked about school playground equipment, did, did this development, when it initially started, or the amendments to it, pay park dedication fees?
Not that I know of, and, and that's, you mean, were, were they paid to us, or did the development create? I don't know, Donovan would have to go back. I thought they did, and I thought they were paid to, to somebody else, but I absolutely don't know, so...
I mean, I, I can check, um, on receipts for that.
That's an easy thing to discover. I would think so, because the, the theory of that is that instead of having your own playground, your own land, dedicated to the city, that there's money that changes hands, and I don't know if that's a fact or not, so if there, I guess for the lack of playground equipment, it would be something that, that the city was giving them money, if there was going to be one, they should do, they should do it. I guess I will be right. But, you know, and I understand there's a, there's a fear of the unknown as far as the traffic, but, um, there, there are so many examples in Forest Lake of how this traffic is handled so well, I mean, if you, you don't have to spend much time in your upper campus there to see the, how well you handle the traffic and the traffic flow, and, and for that matter, you can go over to the high school, and, and they're very well organized as far as caught kids, high school kids coming and going, so I personally don't have a, any issue with the traffic and the traffic flow, and I think you guys manage it so well. Um, I know that there's some questioning of your math, and I don't know, we assume that the traffic engineers know what they're talking about, but, but, uh, I guess we'll always question an engineer, but, um, and the last thing I, I think I want to say is that, is that we, we need to, to, you have a very positive contribution to the community, and, and I think that anything that we can do to support that contribution is in our best interest for Forest Lake.
Well, I thank the entire council.
Any other discussion? Mike?
Uh, point on the motion, um, my concern with the motion, Eric, is that according to the staff, in your fallen staff's recommendation, number five of that, no, number four of that, is the concerns of the city engineership we met prior to the in- initiation of construction activities. City Engineers Report has numerous, numerous issues regarding traffic numbers, traffic counts, traffic circulation, uh, parking facilities, lottery for parking, I would prefer getting an update from the city engineer, and I would prefer tabling and getting an update from the city engineer on the traffic issues. Traffic is my big issue here, traffic circulation, how it impacts the neighborhood's a big issue, and I'd prefer hearing from our staff on that prior to, uh, an approval.
I, I would, uh, I go with Mike on this, I would have preferred a table, um, mainly due to traffic discuss, a large laundry list from the city engineer, um, and I have a, also have some proof of parking for future, and possibly some of these other details of a fence and whatnot, kind of locked down a little more solid. So my preference would be a table, um, and not against the project, I, I think we need to lock it down better before I can say yes.
Um, the, the biggest traffic concern to me, and the reason why I was willing to just accept the engineer's piece, um, and it was on the southeast side where they add the access between the, the parking lots, um, and I think that is an unknown, and I think it works the way they've drawn it, and I think that will actually function best. Um, I'm not a traffic engineer, and I don't want to pretend to be one, um, but I'm, I'm willing to accept it either way, I think the way that they draw it takes less cars off of the neighborhood, and if our traffic, if our engineer approves of that, I'm okay with it. If he says that's going to back up onto the parkway, I'm going to trust him and have him say that that's got to close off. Um, if there's other traffic concerns, um, in the area, and, and it, it means that other members of this commission need more time to, to hear our engineers' reports, I'm not against that, um, you know, I'd rather, I'd rather see this pass in two weeks than have it fail tonight, so...
Other comments?
I agree.
Would you like to proceed with the motion, or as is?
Or you can move to table?
Your call, your motion's on the table.
The table and the motion, it's a procedure, anyone can make it.
Is that true? You know, I like my Robert's Rule of Order man here, so I'll make a motion to table, um, the proposal till we get some answers from the city engineer on traffic, proof of parking, his fence. Give the applicant and the city an amount of time, I'm looking at everyone, you want two weeks or four weeks, to come back to us with some answers, and then we would vote on it then, so I'd make a motion to table.
I'll second that.
There's no discussion, so we'll call the question, all those in favor, sign by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Abstentions? Motion carries, what date? Two weeks, four weeks?
The four, um, next week the city engineer is, is going to be out of the office, so two weeks is unreasonable.
Okay, four weeks?
Okay. Um, I live in a real world, this is my world, approval of things, getting access to people in public places, we've got to have some kind of guarantee here that we're going to have access to the city engineer. One of our frustrations, and this is on the record, one of our frustrations has been extremely limited access to our city engineer. It wasn't fair to us, and I'm venting, it wasn't fair to us to, four days ago, give us three pages of, of comments, and never call us once to say, this is what I'm going to do. I've been doing this for longer than everybody else sitting at that table there have been doing what you're doing. I'm neither bragging nor complaining, I'm, I'm, more than four hundred completed projects, probably three hundred, this is probably my three-hundredth planning commission meeting. Um, that, I don't think we were treated fairly here, and I, I, I understand the real world that things are tight, and everybody's busy and that sort of thing, but I, I want some kind of gentleman's agreement here, that we have reasonable access to the city engineer.
Aye. You're, you're asking us to give you that? I don't think we can give you that.
Well, I'm not, no, I, come on, Mike, I'm speaking to the record here, okay?
So, four weeks would be July twenty-fifth to work all the details out, that would be the fourth Wednesday, which we meet second and fourth. Does that seem reasonable to the city?
I believe so, um, if, and, you know, I, I do, will, I will grant the applicant, the reality is that the city engineer is really busy, um, and he always does, you know, provide the, the staff memos when he can, and, and so there are a number of issues here, um, and I'm sure that they all can be resolved, but it will take some time.
Thank you. Thank you to the applicant, thank you for everyone else who participated this evening. I think we'll take five minutes, five-minute recess, and then we will move on to the riveting comprehensive plan discussion. We, we'll call the meeting back to order.
We'll warm up your chair, Dennis.
Are we?
I should be the one to, um, wrestle Brian for time earlier in the game and not wait until the last minute, wait.
All right, next item on our agenda is a city of Forest Lake draft twenty forty comprehensive plan, we'll be holding a public hearing, and we will discuss the draft plan. Who's presenting?
Where's our presenter?
He's on.
Mark, could you?
Mr. Hart?
Are you talking to me? Excuse me.
Joe's a nice enough guy, but call him tomorrow for lunch.
Yeah, I apologize.
Uh, Donovan, are you presenting, or do we have a special guest this evening?
I am presenting, um, and I have this lovely, um, you know, PowerPoint for you, which, um, I'm wondering, given, given the time, that, uh, actually I should, um, uh, be more of, maybe let, let the Planning Commission direct the, um, conversation, um, but I do want to provide a, a little bit of introduction, and mostly this was, um, designed for, uh, trying to get the straight slideshow, sorry, um, designed for, um, um, to be posted online to provide a summary, kind of a Cliff Notes.
The panels?
I'm sorry?
You want the panels?
No, 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 this is good. Um, and, uh, but starting off with, back in, uh, April of twenty seventeen, the Planning Commission effort started, and this is part of the open house, we had a, um, basically created a word cloud, and participants were encouraged to speak of what, what would, how would you imagine Forest Lake in twenty forty? Um, and you can see some of the main message that came out around, you know, not a suburb, you know, balanced, progressive, conservative, uh, even some wag wrote Rapid Press on there. Um, but the, uh-
A little advertising.
I'm looking at you, Commissioner Langness, I believe.
The owner of Rapid Press was in the meeting, I don't remember.
Rumor has it, um, so anyways, um, we also did along here a community survey, um, you know, and here's some, some of the, um, summarizing, um, three-city strengths, proximity to twin cities, small-town character, lakes and natural resources, challenges including aging infrastructure, lack of well-paying jobs, and other threats to quality of lakes, other, other items, and also like threats to quality of lakes and natural resources, and residents, you know, travel outside of Forest Lake for work, or for dining in a restaurant, shopping for essential or basic needs, and for vision themes, um, that either are commercial or economic downtown destination, or fixed local politics. So, so, um, part of what this whole comp plan effort has been is to take the community survey, take these community themes, and I encourage to, you know, review the, the community survey results, which are on appendix online, and then move into the actual production of the, of the, of the draft, which, um, also included a vision statement. The city of Forest Lake is known for its natural resources and outdoor recreation. The city's overall vision is to serve as a regional hub while maintaining its natural resources, and providing a recreation, a range of recreation opportunities. In twenty forty, Forest Lake has a thriving, multimodal downtown commercial area, surrounded by natural resource corridors and a range of housing options. As new development is proposed, the emphasis will be the protection of natural resources and continuing connections between all areas of the city. And so the, the, the plan follows through with, you know, in, um, you know, through these overarching goals, protecting natural resources, providing for parks and recreational opportunities, guiding, guide land and manage growth, um, plan for an effective transportation system, and create, expand opportunities for employment growth, and all the different chap, you know, within the different chapters. The, um, the plan, you know, has been this long effort involving a series of participa- of, uh, pub, public participations, numerous, uh, planning commissions, city council, EDA workshops, and, and the plan for itself is something, is something of an interesting exercise, because we are, we are in this situation planning for a population that's planned to, projected to increase by over a third, um, it could be planning for, you know, a population, many people who may not be here, may not be alive, may have moved out, um, there are technological changes in communication and transportation that we can't foresee, and so the pla, the plan itself, in some ways, is this just rubbing a crystal ball and seeing, okay, what, at this point, can we imagine, based on data, based on projections, um, our best guesses, how can we imagine life in twenty forty? Um, and I guess I, I encourage you to, you know, keep that in mind- And I guess I encourage you to, you know, keep that in mind as we look at it as a big picture, something we can't be too specific about because, you know, we, we don't know what transportation looks like, for instance. You know, autonomous vehicles will be here soon enough, and how will that change our travel patterns? How will it change our shopping patterns? You know, will we have jet packs in 2040? I mean, really don't know. And so the plan, when we talk about transportation, is meant to be general in a way that we're kind of carving out areas, carving out spheres, but we can't really say what's going to happen within that, that space. And there's, you know, we did a number of workshops. And I'd like to come through with some of the major change, point out some of the major changes that the plan has. And I'm just scrolling through these. Again, this is kind of more for, you know, a, as an introduction that this planning commission, I don't believe, needs. And then moving toward the, the actual, the large changes. First, we go with land use. And what we find there, and what I, and what I had printed out and placed before you is this, the future land use plan, which includes these significant changes. And so we see creation of a highway business land use category in the southwest corner of the city, increased mixed use in business park areas along 61, expansion of the Broadway Commercial Area, expansion of residential east of Highway 61. And also an improvement, this is just, you know, throughout the different land use categories where they're not stopping at the middle of the str, you know, at the edge of a street. So it's striding the street so that when development comes, when infrastructure is extended, both sides of the street can be developed. And we've seen sometimes, in some occasions, particularly with 190th, how that was a disadvantage where the MUSA boundary only stopped on the northern side of the, of the street, which in the future, if sewer was expanded, it can't really, it doesn't make sense to have a development only on one side of the street. And so, you know, this is the 20, 20 future, 20, 2040 future land use plan on the screen. I'd like to now bring up the actual 2030 plan and point out some of, some of these changes I just mentioned in that, in that slide with the bold points. So if we want to look, we can see how, you know, in this south, southwest corner area, which is where there's an envisioned connection to the 35E and eventually 35W, this whole area is, is for, is planned to be a highway commercial. And this is meant to be wholesale business, wholesale warehouses, e-commerce, those sort of large land uses. And really, it's the 2040 job center. What we see with the existing, you know, Broadway and 35, Interstate 35 intersection is, in many ways, is built out. You know, there's probably some areas where you could consolidate parking, but due to wetlands and simple, simple access and the strong desire for business to have that close proximity to the interchange entrance and exits, that area, there isn't really feasible to have a, you know, plan for, you know, a job and employment center, business center 20 years out and have, you know, be able to accommodate it in that area. So this is meant to be the 2040, you know, commercial area. And obviously, you know, if the interstate exchange, you know, does not happen, you know, the city, you know, would likely look at this again and perhaps look at market studies and look to see if, you know, if they need to look at the plan again and actually amend it. And so, but that's, that's the largest land use plan change is the introduction.
Can I interrupt you a second? You've, you've got it in pink, which says highway business as opposed to the dark maroon that says highway commercial.
Correct, yeah.
Highway business?
Highway business, yes. I didn't have that copy in front of me. Yes, that is correct.
And it's, it would be held for that purpose until 2040? If, if the interchange doesn't go through?
No, no. I believe, I mean, if it becomes clear in, say, five years or so, that that interchange is not going to happen, you know, it's, I think it's the city's benefit to reevaluate that. What that would look like, I don't know, or, you know, even, you know, there is, there is some highway interchange currently in the City of Hugo and the Anoka County, Lino Lakes and then county, county, Anoka County's transportation plan to have that connection 170th. The city doesn't believe that's very feasible and for a number of reasons. And, and is proposing 180th at this point. However, we have very limited, we only have so much leverage on that one because, you know, this, your Columbus, I believe, is on board. But, you know, this interchange would be in Lino Lakes and Columbus, you know, not in, in Forest Lake or Hugo. And so, you know, we've been talking to Hugo, we're talking to Columbus, you know, had some conversations with Lino Lakes. But what we'd really like to do now is to put this on the map, understanding that it is, is a long undertaking. I mean, it could be 15 years before that, that interchange becomes real. But we believe that the, the project to put it, you know, at 170th and then spanning the wetlands and parkland over to 35W is not feasible, where it's much simpler to do it on 180th, as well as there are large land use, large parcels, it's largely undeveloped in that southwest corner. Whereas along 170th, it is, there are a number of businesses, I'm sorry, there are a number of homes and it's smaller, smaller parcels. And if you're looking for that, that wholesale redevelopment to really focus on that transportation infrastructure of a new interstate, you know, a pretty expensive endeavor, you'd want to have it in a place where there'd be, where there are larger parcels to actually, where, you know, you know, developers could really, you know, have much, a much simpler process of consolidating parcels to really, to really make something happen.
180th is our south boundary, right?
Correct.
Okay. And 190th is one mile up?
Correct.
And that's where sewer and water end right now?
Or... The MUSA boundary ends in 190th, correctly. I mean, right now. Other large changes with this land use plan include, you know, the mixed use area with, you know, the city-owned property and much, and really stretching all along Highway 61 as well. I can jump over to that one and show you on the screen as well. And also, as I mentioned, the Broadway expansion. And that really is to get a, a depth of lots so that the, you know, that redevelopment can occur in some effective, mean, way. Right now, for instance, there's some, you know, single-family house, currently, single-family house lots that are for sale on Broadway. And we had, I had some conversation with developers and they're really not, not deep enough. So you can, I'll focus here. You can see that, you know, it's a little more to the north, but it's extending. Again, this is the future land use plan, so this is not zoning, but this represents, you know, the first step toward rezoning if approved. Then also, as I mentioned, a broader expansion of residential to the east, east of Highway 61, you know, all the way to about approximately 1,000 feet east of Harrow, as we can see here. Also, this rural residential area, south of 200th, is also expanded. And as I mentioned, that the whole area, areas along 61 as mixed use. And this is really, is to take advantage of the, you know, the vehicle traffic along, you know, 61. And the, the business park does remain, actually is expanding a little bit. The, the current plan has some medium density housing around here, but this is all the business park, which is meant to be the, the research, kind of corporate campus or, you know, research type of land use. And this, that is a continuation from the 2030 plan. Any, any questions right now based on the future land use plan?
Not so much a question, but more of a comment on the discussion regarding the, the large pink area in that corner. It was kind of a shock to me the first time I saw it as well. And I think there's a few things we should kind of note in that. When we look at build outs, the build outs of that area down there is well beyond 10 And these comp plans come to us at least every 10 years, but you can always amend them in between. So from, from the standpoint of changing it now, it doesn't change the actual use today. It doesn't change the taxpayers' liability and those types of things in that region. But what it does do is having all of that business area in there strengthens the position of putting 180th on versus having the alternative far more expensive and more complicated road closer to Hugo. It, it puts us in better competition with, and that, and that piece. It also leaves open this huge area where we have it zoned that way so that if Amazon wanted to build their second headquarters here or the next type of massive project like that, it's sitting there with a ton of vacant land and then they can build the interchange. So I think it, I think it, I don't know that Donovan gave all the positives about that particular piece in that section of town. And I think it is probably the most significant on the map, but I don't expect that it's going to build out that way in the, during this comp plan. So that's kind of where I was at on that. Just wanted to share that from the task force.
On that area, Donovan, that area right now is rural, right? And the zoning is 10 acre minimum, I think?
It's, well, it, it's 10 acres in the MXR1, which is north of 190th here. And that's 10 acres without city water and sewer. It's 20 acres south in agricultural, you know, down here. So it's 20 acre minimum here.
Do we follow through? What, what would we do with the zoning on that piece?
Well, I think it would, it would probably be, there'd be some sort of trigger that, you know, the, the existing uses could remain, but this is something that Hugo's done with it, with their area, with their, with their, their proposed interchange area, that, you know, if a large development comes through and then, but then, you know, then this, the zoning does work for that large development.
But if we leave, yeah, the, the mechanics of it, I guess if, if we leave that agricultural, 20 acre minimum, if somebody wanted to come in and put in a new pole barn or put up something, is it not conforming to our land use plan then? I mean, we'll have, there, we'll have a conflict between the residential existing nature of the neighborhood, let it be 20 acres, and the proposed land use of, of business park or business or commercial park or whatever we're calling highway business. Do you see an issue with that in the future?
It, it, it's, it is a present issue. It's something we need to work through. You know, it's something that we recognized with the last plan that, you know, that put a lot of those single-family homes in, say, business park or, you know, in the mixed use, the downtown mixed use zone. And we had that zoning text amendment to allow those property owners to build garages. I'd like to not repeat that occurrence here.
Yeah, no, I think we want to try to make those two maps conform where we can't.
Yeah, and, you know, what this, and, you know, there's ways to make, to make them, you know, make the future land use plan and the zoning consistent, but also allow people who, you know, who have enjoyed using that property in a fashion for a number of years to continue the use, to do so and not be at cross purposes with that, the 2040 vision for that area.
Well, we go through our zoning and try to make amendments to the zoning. Once, once our land use is adopted, the future plan is adopted, the comp plan is adopted, we've got a future land use map, will we try to rezone some areas to conform with the, with the new plan then?
Correct. I mean, there's a whole, actually, comprehensive rezoning and that includes, you know, reworking the map as well as the, you know, the, the standards. You know, the Met Council gives a nine-month period to do that, which I think is pretty aggressive, but...
So that's phased through.
Donovan, a couple, a couple of things in regard to the mixed use versus residential right along Highway 61. Why is, why is there a mismatch of those areas and then, and then also the green areas that are being parks and recreation? There are, there are no parks there today, are there?
That's a, that's a designation, it's, well, it's Tanner's Brook, of course. And...
Is that, is that where Tanner's Brook is?
Right here, yes.
Both parts of that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think we gotta be careful with that though, Donovan. You know that old argument.
I sure do.
You gotta be careful designating private property as parkland.
Well, it's not park land. I mean, it's, it's a...
What you've got on here is park and rec. Well, the zoning of that property, how is it zoned today? Oh, it's agricultural. Part of it is, part of it's zoned, the MXR1.
Yeah, yeah, the zoning is MXR1, correct? Yeah. To answer, Gary, your question regarding on the east, the west side. We looked at the, the Highway 61 access along here, and it, it really doesn't exist in any kind of meaningful way. And recognizing that what really could drive the development along here is, you know, direct access to 61, you said, you know, this, a pocket of residential here and then here probably makes sense. Of course, you had that, that golf course frontage here as well as, you know, as envisioned here, which we discussed recently in a workshop, and the question came up, and I incorrectly gave the information that this was all zone mixed, mixed use, in the, I'm sorry, future land use, mixed use. Part of this is future land use residential along this golf course here. So let's, take advantage of that, that golf course proximity there.
When you look at the map, and I was part of the hash around this, one of the things, if you look at the old map or the current map and this map, we really try to get zones to be more contiguous and not have so many five, 10, 15 acre plots differently long-term. And so as you go north now, so there's the pink, as Eric explained, this is really the only area in the city that we have a reasonable chance of landing big industry is somewhere right up against the freeway. If we can't be next to the freeway, it isn't going to happen. And that's the general consensus in the city. So this is a, you know, go big or go home type of deal. As we go north, and I want to point one other thing out, and, thank you. Keep going north, please. As we get up, as you notice, the downtown, the Broadway area, that kind of gets more of a contiguous zone there. And then I want to draw your attention to the first lake of Forest Lake, right here where it says North Shore Drive. If you notice, that is no, it's no longer residential, it's getting moved. The thought is that as downtown expands, we would like to see expansion that would benefit the downtown area, potentially condominiums.
the downtown area, potentially condominiums, apartment buildings. Um, for those who are familiar with that part of the lake, it's got a, a fair amount of three deep houses with some wild lot lines and some other stuff. So, long-term, we think that that will naturally, uh, become more, more developed into a bigger project.
Multifamily.
Yeah, more of a multifamily type deal. Again, this is twenty forty, this isn't happening next year, probably in, it wouldn't been on twenty years, but it's a vision thing here. So that's what I wanted to point out is that a large part of this map really get, tried to get rid of a lot of those small areas that we had pocketed in here and there because they really do fit in either zone, so you're able to combine them. Any other questions? Because we live and die in this area when it comes to the comp plan.
How about the staging plan, the utility staging, or, or am I jumping ahead?
You're way ahead, man. All right, I'll wait, I'll wait. That's chapter twenty-seven.
Far ahead, look here, next, next slide, there we go.
There we go, all right. Kevin, you have, yeah? I just, hold on, I've got a question on the last slide.
What you're showing there for expansion of the Musa?
Hold on. Kevin, are you on the back map?
Uh, actually, I just, if we could go back one page before we move on. Uh, north of eight there, what are you showing in that, along the freeway in eight and thirty-five?
Eight and thirty-five.
Uh, right to your left where you're at.
Oh, right here?
Yeah, go, go all the way up to thirty-five, the yellow, no?
Go left, five, okay.
There, right there, all that yellow.
Rural residential.
And we're leaving that rural res?
Yeah, and this whole area. Um, we're not expecting to get city, you know, water and sewer north of, of eight, I think is the reason on that one.
Not expecting it?
No.
Hmm. Nor are they ever expecting to get water by my house, so.
No, I understand. What? Pretty wet there.
Are there homes back in there now?
There's some, uh, yeah, there is, I think it's five acre lots in there, some gravel roads.
Again, highway commercial or highway business. But that road's going to change, isn't it? Isn't, are we still looking at possibility of eight having, uh, a clover leaf eventually? Is that our goal?
I think the next, well, I mean, there's the, you know, I think the next big improvement, which wouldn't be a number of years because they're still constructing the current, you know, expansion. But is to hit, is to have that, that, you know, heading west on eight to, to north and expansion, you know, I, I expect that's going, that will occur, you know, at some point.
Okay.
Okay, now we can move on to the exciting Musa slide.
Yeah, all right. So this basically does conform to the, 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 the greater, um, expanded development potential in that southwest corner. So the, so we have, you know, this kind of olive color is that, uh.
Business park?
The twenty forty.
Oh, I see.
Um, Musa boundary expansion.
Yeah.
Where the, more of the peach, um, well, I'll call it, I'll call it a brown, um, is, is the twenty thirty. Um, and so this follows into that, you know, highway business area and also expansion of, of some areas on here where we've seen some of the larger developments and where there is pretty, pretty good access to city water and sewer right over here. And then with the, the blue represents the post twenty forty, so expanding further. Um, this is given what the, uh, you know, what, you know, what our expectations are for, you know, filling out, you know, these other residential and, and commercial areas. And I'll also just note there is, you know, small expansion also up here, you know, looking at just where is more developable land. And so this, this cropped up as another opportunity up there on, uh, that's two hundred and thirty-fifth, right there.
Can you enlarge the index enough to see, we can see what they mean, the colors mean?
Yeah.
I think it's twenty, twenty, thirty, forty and post forty, right?
Oh, that's what it is, okay.
No, Donovan, to the lower.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
Where'd you go, man? Just.
Sorry. Yeah, it's kind of, sorry, the resolution breaks down there.
Twenty, thirty, forty?
Yeah, so it's twenty twenty, you can see twenty thirty is the kind of peach color and then twenty forty, this plan, Musa extension. So we're heading, you know, getting over the other side of sixty-one. Of course, this is all the business park area here. And then post twenty forty is fur- is further out on, along one ninetieth and then all the way to, uh, beyond Harrow. Harrow being this ro- this road right here. Okay?
So twenty twenty is a real area? It, it's done or going to be done or the area that's, that's marked for twenty twenty?
Well, I mean, it was approved, it was approved for, uh, is a planned extension of the infrastructure there. I mean, obviously in many places it's not. I mean, this is a city-owned parcel south of Hedward's Parkway, you know, um, you know, and there's not, city, city water is stubbed, you know, on, on here, but stops. So this was more, it's more of a, this is more of a, a planned extension than actual, you know, CIP or, you know, the actual construction.
Questions on the Musa boundary or about Musa plan? Moving on Donovan?
So, um, I'd like to just continue with, um, uh, some of the larger changes with the, uh, the transportation plan, um, is, you know, is related to the interstate interchange that's envisioned. Also, we see more mention bicycles in the objectives of the plan. And then also, um, in the parks and trails element, um, there is with larger changes, large change there relate to the, uh, trails plan that involves, uh, an extension of, of trails throughout the, the city. We have the, uh, the, the Langness Memorial Trail up here.
Oh, now they're going to vote no on it.
Um, no, I really think that this, you know, one of the first things actually is when I came to, uh, my job interview in the, the city of Forest Lake, I was a few minutes early and being a big bicyclist, I, you know, found myself over on South Shore Drive thinking, wouldn't that be amazing to be able to bike around, you know, this lake? And, uh, then I found out that really it's something of a dangerous venture to do that. And, you know, I think our residents in twenty forty will really appreciate this sort of connection that goes around. And what is envisioned is, you know, along the main thoroughfare, um, to, to incorporate that. Um, again, this is the twenty forty plan. This is for population that's not here yet. It's for us as we've, as we're aging in place and enjoying, you know, the golden years, playing lots of pickleball, I'm sure.
Happy golden years, pickleball.
And also takes advantage of where we see roads improving. Um, the one on, along, you know, County Road fifty, there is some effort, you know, joint effort with the county to identify that is, is a, um, is a trail with the idea there'd be a, a larger connection, you know, heading east and then down to Big Marine Park and through Hugo and then back up through the Hardwood Creek Trail. And, uh, you know, some of these we can see perhaps are coming sooner than we think. You know, if, if the Pratt Homes development comes through, we'll see that little connection from the Hardwood Creek Trail and Forest Road into the Fenway, uh, Park area. Um, and, uh, and some other things we, you know, we identified that there's small things I sat down with Jamie, um, from, uh, the Parks Coordinator to really, you know, look at where do we see a connection, what, what makes sense. Um, there's city right of way that continues through here south of Shields Lake. Well, why not, you know, a trail go through there? And it's probably inconceivable that, um, not inconceivable, but, you know, it's unlikely as soon there'll be, um, a road through there, but there is city right of way and how about a trail that goes through there that could create a nice little loop? It's currently wooded. Um, and so that's, that's the largest thing with the, with the Parks and Trails Commission that I can identify.
And Donovan, um, and I should have brought this up before the meeting today to you, but on, I think it's called Forest Hills, North Shore ninety-seven, the phase two portion of the trail. It's, it's already approved in that development, but it's not shown on the map here.
Oh, you mean right in here?
Yeah, the phase two is the eastern portion. You can see the, the portion to the, if you put your mouse right back where you had it.
Right here?
Yeah, that portion is already built, but just to the east of that, where that white space is, there's trails actually planned in there for that phase of that development and they're not on this map.
Okay.
They could be added relatively easily.
Isn't that where the, uh, solar panels are?
No, that's, that's actually in Scandia. That's, um, between North Shore.
Okay, okay, just a little bit right on the border there with the fences, okay.
Yep, the other side of North Shore.
And so this is the second phase of Forest Hills Farms that was, had not been developed.
The one, one thing Donovan that isn't in the plan, I don't think it's in any of the plans, is feeding more from where people actually live to the Hardwood Creek. You know, none, none of the areas close to downtown, um, you know, there's, there's a trail on Broadway, you know, but nobody lives on Broadway. Um, you know, and there's a connection down somewhere in the neighborhood of, of, um, the senior center that you can figure out your way to get to the trail. But, but in, in all of the streets, I'm going to say downtown, second north to second south, for example, that where lots of people live and would, would like to ride other than on the street to get to the trail, there's no, there's nothing planned there.
Yeah, I mean, this is the trail plan. I mean, there could be, you know, pavement markings and other kind of facilities that could, that could promote that. I mean, we thought about this one here that kind of links these, these park areas to the trail. Um, you know, this twenty twenty-two or so is, this reconstruction will occur and, you know, we'd like to see a trail along that, like around County Road thirty-two. But you're looking for, maybe more local connections could be facilitated through the, just simple pavement markings rather than designating a full trail.
I know there could be, but they just never get on anybody's agenda.
I, I think they were talked about at some point, um, during the process and we have to remember that the Hardwood Creek Trail is, um, actually a future rail line and won't be a trail probably when that happens. Um, that's way, way, way down the road, but that's kind of the big picture thought I think we need to take in play here. And at some points it just makes sense to connect our trails to it, but I don't know that we want that to be our artery and then having people figure out thirty, forty years from now when they decide to put trains in there.
Well, you know, obviously design is, is thirty, forty years out, but, um, where they've done, been doing that, they have been doing, you know, co-location, you know, and that's sometimes tough, but, um, you know, the fact if there was, you know, a rail, you know, built there, um, doesn't mean that the trail goes away, you know, I think. I mean, it's also become very popular, you know, for anything, you know, the snowmobile, you know, traffic for instance. So, I mean, I think.
Second most used heart in Washington County, the Hardwood Creek Trail is, according to Washington County's, after Lake Elmo Reserve or Preserve. Anyway, yeah. I'd like to, I'd like to see, you know, and, and that should be more a shorter range plan, not a twenty forty plan. Some of those things start. One of the things that I think is frustrating to the bicyclist is that, that, um, other than state highway roads where there's outsiders money, there's no money spent to do our own things for Forest Lake. There's no Forest Lake city money spent to do markings on streets or those kind of things. And I don't, I don't put that in this kind of plan, but that's the frustrating part, I think, for bicyclists.
I'm, I'm going to keep pushing Donovan there because we do have to have a public hearing and we need to be out of here by eleven and I'm really hoping eleven's just a concept.
I can clarify that if you need it. I'm moving, I'm moving. Um, we'd have, in the, in the housing chapter, um, some significant changes we see are, um, some, some, uh, language that, you know, opens up the idea of having separate, separate accessory units. Um, this is something that I think residents will respond to, um, and of course there are many hurdles to overcome to actually make it a reality. But, uh, you know, as far as having multi-generational households but in separate units, um, a lot of adult children coming back, living with the parents, um, you know, and, and both of them wanting their own living spaces, uh, even, you know, in some cases, um, you know, parents who have children who can't through different developmental disabilities or, um, cognitive disabilities, not really be able to function truly independently, but having their own living space with, you know, a, a parent nearby, um, is, is a, is a feasible option. Um, for those reasons, the, um, you know, it's potentially that's, that can, that could occur, um, even within, within our scope of the twenty forty plan. Also is language to expand owner occupied senior housing options. Um, on the, on the other hand, there was a much stronger stress in the twenty-ten plan, well, the, you know, the twenty thirty, um, comp plan that, that did, uh, talk about affordable housing, it's not in the current plan.
What, what, what is that? Because it's already, um, co-op housing and that kind of thing is allowed, um, in multifamily kind of thorning, I believe. What does that mean then? What, what do you mean expand that? What, what else are you talking about?
Um, the actual language, I'll pull it up for you. That's, that's one of the objectives, is, um, expand owner occupied senior housing options. Um, you know, that, maybe that's, you know, community land trust, uh, property, um, maybe it's, um, I don't know, it's maybe, it's what we decide, but, you know, and again, it's, you know, if you, if it's in the comp plan, you know, a future city council can, can follow up and have support to, to explore the options of, for senior housing, you know, for senior housing.
Me, okay, yeah, let's go on, that's all right.
I mean, do you want to, do you want to propose some, some more?
No, I, I just thought it was already allowed. I, I, you know, it's probably in the past plan, but that's okay. It can be included.
And, uh, with economic competitiveness, uh, in that chapter, significant changes that I see is, uh, some mention of home businesses, um, to allow those that don't impact nearby properties as an accessory to residential use. Instead of the, uh, just the vague language of, in the last plan that, that talked about attracting well-paying jobs, now it, um, there's a target to encourage new light and, new light industrial, office industrial, high-tech and professional services, um, which could very well, you know, fit in that, the, you know, in that highway business, um, land use area. And, uh, also in the, in twenty-ten, well, I'm sorry, it was adopted around twenty-ten, but the twenty-thirty plan has, uh, lots of language regarding building and sign design that isn't currently in the, in this, in this plan. So that's, that's a big change. And then also, the, this is not a change, but still retained, um, in the community facilities chapter, um, the site of a potential public works facility. Um, I believe that is new actually, but, you know, the city's owned the compost site for a long period of time and this is area that's within the, the approach zone for the airport. And so, you know, the, the airport overlay district really restricts, Minn dot Aeronautic, Minn dot Aeronautics rules also a restrictive element in there. And so, the city does envision a, a second public work. Mid dot Aeronautics rules also a restrictive element in there, and so the city does envision a second public works site to move them off of Fourth Street. And also retained is the site of a potential second fire station. This is not a, you know, an imminent reality, but since the, you know, the current fire station location is rather distant, you know, if the fires, and also, it's somewhat dependent on if the fire department became professional, they could staff this. But there's a concern that now, given that, like, lower density, you know, residential around there, that could it even, you know, be staffed by volunteer force? But the city would like to retain that as a site of potential, potential second fire station. And also, there is an implementation chapter, which we won't get into tonight, but I just wanted to provide this, this background as a, you know, first of two public hearings, and also this then to be continued on July 11th. With, I'll be able to answer some of your questions. I've also asked, you know, Jamie to be, to be here if you believe that she's needed to answer any questions regarding the Parks and Trails chapter, and also asked kind of Ryan if he might be available for that, also for that July 11th meeting, if it's, if it's needed. So at this point, I want to open back up to discussion, or what else do you see? Any other questions or?
So Donovan, the end result of tonight, besides the public hearing to get input, is really just discussion and input on the plan? There will be no motions this evening?
Yes, that's my intention.
Donovan, going back to your accessible dwelling units, the ADUs, do we have language currently regarding ADUs in our city plan?
Yes, they're limited. They must occur within a single-family dwelling, not have independent entrance, a maximum of 600 square feet. And so when I do repeat those standards to residents who inquire about these, it doesn't seem to fit their needs in most cases.
And so we'd be looking at changing some of that language in the near future so that maybe it could be a detached accessory dwelling instead of having to be in the current resident?
I'd like to have that discussion. I mean, I think that there's, there's a demand for it. And, you know, there are many other communities that have, that have adopted these type of rules, and the, I mean, there are definitely issues. I mean, parking is a big one. You know, you introduce another household, there's another household of cars.
Yeah, but they're temporary.
Temporary?
The accessory dwellings are on a temporary basis, right? I mean, most of the cities incorporate them that, let's say it's a senior that's going to be in there, and they don't want to be in a, like, a senior building, and they have assisted care that's in that building, when that, when that person is no longer there, passes on or whatever, then that, that permit is now revoked, and that accessory dwelling has to be removed. It's a more of a temporary accessory dwelling, not a permanent accessory dwelling.
To my knowledge, most of the ADUs are for permanent dwellings. I mean, there is a special provision, and if you recall, there was something state legislature passed to have those temporary medical, you know, dwellings that the city at that time, you know, did not, you know, passed, adopted a rule saying that basically we have these interim dwelling units, like, in this case, it's a, it's an interim use permit. If your home is destroyed by a natural disaster or for other purposes, very specific reasons, then you could come and actually do that interim use permit process. So, I mean, that still exists within our zoning code. But this is, what this, what this plan goal or objective has is the ability to expand that so that they are more, more permanent nature, you know, so that you have that multi-generational household, or even where perhaps it's the senior who wants to age on the lot essentially and build a smaller dwelling unit, and then maybe, you know, rents out the principal structure, what was formerly the principal structure.
That's interesting, yeah.
So, I mean, that's, it's-
If you had somebody that's going to build a garage and a separate entrance to their house, it's not going to be temporary?
Right, right.
Now, isn't there allowance for accessory housing, but it's limited to five-acre, 10-acre plots or rural residential or something like that currently? It has to be a certain acreage?
Yeah, that's the temporary one I'm talking about, if you-
But that is limited to acreage?
Yes, yes.
City lot?
Yeah.
So, right with the commission, I would like to hold a public hearing, and then we'll come back for further discussion. So this is a public hearing this evening. The way this works is that if you'd like to address this issue, we wish that you come to the lectern, state your name and address for the record, spend a few minutes giving your thoughts. We will wait and listen to everyone who would like to speak. When everyone is finished speaking, we will close the public hearing. So with that, I'll officially open the public hearing. Does anyone wish to speak to this application or this issue? Don't all get up at once. I'll make a last call. Does anyone, does anyone wish to speak to this issue? Seeing no one move, come forward, we will close the public hearing. So if I may be so bold, can I ask who has sat here this entire evening? And you must have a role here, and I apologize, but I have no idea who we are. You are a star citizen. I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but I go, she must be involved in this somehow. Well, welcome. We wish, we're going to meet again on the 11th, so mark the calendar now. All right, further discussion, any issue? Donovan, did you get comments from all, from most of the members? Or anything that stood out in our emails to you, some consistency, some concerns?
No, I did, I did get a couple of emails, which ended up, are still on my desk. And some of them do, you know, are just good fact-checking, I appreciate. I think it takes a village to put forth one of these plans. And what I'd like to do, bring back, is to basically create a list of, you know, what we can take to city council on, you know, this is changes that the planning commission is suggesting, you know, just for the discussion so that we can all, you know, be transparent about what, you know, what the planning commission, you know, is recommending for city council adoption.
And you want that at our next meeting?
Yes.
Continue sending you emails with comments, concerns, issues?
Yes.
Is that the preferred method of communication?
Yeah, because it becomes part of the record so that we can, but also I can, you know, I think it's just better than verbal. Or oral, I mean.
I have a gentleman, and I confess to reading this maybe quicker than I should have, and I don't always see everything, remember everything that I've been reading, but, and this probably comes in light of the parks area and also in the housing area, that I don't get a feeling of an understanding by this plan of the recognition that we're aging, that we have a group of people that are moving and getting larger at this end of the deal. And I don't see, I don't see that, or I don't feel that from the plan. I don't see, feel that from the parks area in terms of any kind of an objective to put more adult items in parks, for example, as opposed to everything be geared to kids. I also don't see things for teenagers as any kind of an objective for the plan over this next 20, 25 years. In, you know, in regard to the housing, you know, I don't think, there's a lot of stuff in there about affordable. But, you know, other than the things that happen by accident, the affordable portion is just, it happens by accident. And I know there's objectives in there, I know there's partners suggested in there, but, but as far as the real world today, there's not an adoption of helping affordable housing, to affordable housing for the person that works for $12, $13 an hour at the bank and needs to have a place to live. We're building a lot of luxury apartments, they're called, which I don't, I don't know if they're affordable or not, I have a price to put.
I encourage you to send, send over some language that kind of addresses those, those concerns.
I'll look at them. Dennis?
Just a question. One of my areas of interest and concern is this, the area of, you know, lot size and more of the specifics of zoning. Is this kind of the second half of this thing? I mean, this was one through four. I mean, is there going to be, are we going to directly address that, or is that not something that's part of the comprehensive plan? I know it ultimately has to, there has to be zoning regulations that reflect that, but do we get into lot size and housing density, I mean, recommendations on those kinds, on those areas?
Well, there, I mean, there are recommendations on density, and that is part of the whole, the-
But is that, are you going to do any kind of a presentation on that, like you did on the areas that you covered tonight?
I can, I can present that next time.
I'm not asking you to do it tonight.
Hey, I can do it next time. We won't get into lot size, and that really gets deeper into zoning, you know, that's, that's-
Okay, that's what I'm asking.
You know, that's part two of the two act play.
So that's a, that's a, that's not necessarily something that is covered in great detail here in the comprehensive plan?
No, no, I mean, it's, there can be, there's general language, you know, to give guidance to that rezoning, but-
When we get to that point, I think there needs to be, I mean, I think one of the things that we need to do as a city is take a good, hard look at lot sizes and how attractive we are in comparison to other surrounding communities and other communities in the metro as far as promoting development. There's all this wonderful language about, you know, wanting to be this and do that and leave this kind of impression and that sort of thing, but, I mean, if we are genuinely serious about, you know, attracting developers to, you know, to develop land in our community, we've got, we need to take a hard, because we're behind eight ball in that particular arena right now. There are other communities that have reacted quicker than what we're reacting, and they're reaping the benefits of it, and the longer we wait on some of this stuff, the farther behind we're going to fall. And I, so if it, if it's just a thing that comes under general encouragement to future planning commissions, city councils, what have you, I think that's, needs to be part of this.
Let's continue this conversation offline because I'd like to dig deeper with it, because there are densities proposed, and ultimately, those densities do relate to lot sizes, you know. But, so there might, there might be, you know, what you're addressing concerns at this stage.
There must not have been anything significantly different, because you kind of couched your, you know, your discussion in, you know, here are significant changes, and that didn't come out. I'm not making fun of you, I'm just, you know, I'm just, but I just, I absolutely believe that's a crucial thing for us as a community, and I-
So Donovan, then along those lines, if we think we want smaller lots and single-family is one to three, correct? I believe. Would we, one to three dwellings per acre?
Well, yeah, yeah.
A family, right? If we wanted to dense that up, now, eventually, it would be now in the comp plan the same, we want it one and four, one and five? Or is that a radical change for a comp plan?
No, I mean, that's, that's, it is a conversation. It's one that, you know, you know, needs to hap, you know, needs to, you know, we're getting later in the plan where they can, we can make those kind of changes, because, you know, the language plan is colors in the map to us. You know, kind of, in many ways, we're laypeople as far as looking at this, but to, you know, to engineering, to, you know, underneath the ground, there are all these pipes that support these densities.
Right.
And pipes are sized, you know, all along the way, so if you increase the density here, you got to make sure everything downstream-
Absolutely.
You know, is, needs to be, you know, needs to accommodate that, you know, you know, larger pipes along the way. And, you know, so I'd like to hear more of where you see that, and there's still ways to tweak it, and I don't know if there's excess capacity in the current calculations. But I encourage you to, you know, reach out to me, and then let's see what we can, we can come to on the July 11th meeting.
Other discussion?
One other thing. How does the, how does the comp plan deal with city services? And I'll jump right in, like the fire department. I mean, do we make any recommendations? Do we deal with that at all?
Only on the community facilities level, and if you look at the 2030 plan, it's really extensive because it really, it was, it envisioned this building here, which is the consolidation of, you know, or creation of a whole new fire-
Building a building is one thing. Staffing it is another.
Yeah.
Particularly when it comes, I mean, and the fire department is no exception to that.
It's not part of the comp plan, though.
No.
I mean, there's-
No, 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 I know, but not even recommendations or that sort of thing, so, so you don't get, again, you don't get into that level of detail at the comp plan, and that's fine.
I mean, I don't think it would, it would, and there could be, I mean, there's language, I mean, it could include language that, I don't know if it'd be that meaningful, you know, I mean, some part of, part of the comp plans, it's kind of, it can be a marketing document for a city, and, you know, and we, ours is pretty much to the point, you know, actually, I was looking at Hugo's, it has all kinds of pretty pictures, and that looks great, you know, but we want one that's going to, you know, pretty much provide this working document, and it's not as heavy on the marketing. And I think, you know, there's a lot of intention behind that. We want it shorter. And the last, last plan, I think, was 371 pages, and, you know, hopefully we'll get under 200 on this one. Not that that's, the length itself is a goal, but I think it's meant to be crafted to, where are we at now? What can we see, and what's, what do we need to put in there that's essential to achieving the vision?
You mentioned Hugo's had a lot of nice pictures.
Yeah.
I did hear a comment from some, somebody that the picture on the front of the comp plan shows like the downtown with the old city hall, and it's a very dated photo. Maybe we could update it?
I think there's some room in the budget for that.
Are you talking about the cover photograph on here?
Oops. Any other comments on the plan tonight? Thank you all for your comments. We will move to our other item. Donovan, do you have anything on other?
No, I definitely welcome, you know, commissioner feedback, interaction. Let's, let's get to work, further work. I mean, we're working for a while, and look forward to seeing you on July 11th.
Councilperson Bain, do you have anything for us? Commissioners, anything?
I, I want to first ask a question, Donovan. How is the decision made to have the city engineer at a planning commission meeting? Is that something that we can request, or how do you make that decision just internally at the administrative level?
Just really if there is, I mean, sometimes if the schedule doesn't permit it, but otherwise, it's, you know, as, it appears where there's a, you know, there's a, where there's, you know, we can provide some input. And so that's where, you know, for instance, with July 11th, you know, based on what I'm hearing, but it sounds like I'm not hearing a lot of need for the comp plan part, but, but, you know, as needed, I mean, Ryan is a tireless public servant, so, I mean, he's willing to come when we request him.
It would have been helpful to have him tonight.
Will you be able to influence him getting some attention to that project at Leela so that it doesn't wait till the last week? so that it doesn't wait till the last week?
Yes.
Just for the record, we'll have our requests and responses to his questions in the first part of next week, so there won't be any, everything was going to be precision, dated, you know, paper trail, so there's no question about when stuff was submitted and, you know, and it'll come from me to you.
Okay.
I, I just, I've been doing this for a long time. I'm not going to make a long comment, but I, I feel, I felt we were treated less than fairly tonight. I think you guys were put at a disadvantage, I think, the way that, the, the, the engineer's comments were written. It, it left, you know, it, it raised questions that we felt we had answered. And, you know, I know I have to be careful what I say here, but sometimes you, you can do too good of a job of making a presentation, and that's what happened tonight, because, and I'm not saying that about just myself, but because what it came down to was people didn't believe what we were saying. When they couldn't refute it, they said, "Well, how do we know that's, this is true?" And the city engineer did, with some of his comments, it would be very easy to interpret the way he commented that he didn't believe what we were saying. And I've, I've never, you know, I'm not looking for kudos, or a pat on the back, or sympathy, or anything, but I've never worked harder on a submittal than I have on this one, and I've done hundreds of them. And I, I knew, we knew going in that there was potential, potentially controversial issues, but it, I think we let a few comments kind of skew the perception here. I have looked at previous submittals, their public record of the CUPs, the original CUP like that. I, I do not think there is offense on any CUP drawing. And we'll, we'll, we'll lay that to rest, we'll, you know, the school, in a heartbeat-
Dennis, we tabled the issue this evening.
Yeah.
I appreciate your frustration, but I need to table that.
Okay.
Anything else?
I'm going to adjourn.
Motion in second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
I have to go to work.
Abstentions?